I'd like to call the meeting to order, roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here. We have a core president. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Tonight, we are here to hear from the residents, the potential possibility for the village to allow recreational cannabis sales within the village. We, as a board and village staff as well, have been considering this issue for some time, and we would like the public's input on this most important decision before we bring the matter to a board vote. Any action we take as a board will be at a formal village board meeting in the near future. No action will be taken tonight. We would like to use tonight's meeting as an opportunity to hear from several experts in the field to shed light on the areas that a local municipality must consider when determining whether or not to allow recreational cannabis sales. We will first hear from our village attorneys on the legal aspects of the new cannabis legislation and steps the village will have to take to allow or prohibit recreational cannabis sales in the village. We will then hear from Dr. Aaron Weiner. Is the doctor here? Okay. All right. Yeah, it's rough parking out there. Yeah. All right. We will then hear from Dr. Aaron Weiner, Director of Addiction Services at Linden Oaks Behavioral Health, with health providers insight on legalization of cannabis and its effects on the public. Finally, we will hear from our police chief, Pat Kreese, who will provide us with a law enforcement perspective to the legalization of cannabis. Most importantly, we will then hear from any of the residents or other attendees that wish to speak tonight with their comments regarding the potential sales of recreational cannabis in the village. Given, and it looks like we've got quite a few people, we will be limiting comments to three minutes per individual, as to allow for sufficient time for all the residents and attendees who wish to speak to provide comments. So with that said, I'll get into it. No, that's at the end. Okay, with that said, Jim Farola, our village attorney, has got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Byrne and Village Board for having us speak tonight. Thank you, members of the public, for attending. With the passage of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act on June 25, 2019, with an effective date of January 1, 2020, Illinois became the 11th state to legalize recreational marijuana. Illinois is the first state, however, to do so through a legislatively initiated action rather than through a citizen-initiated referendum. That's a pretty clear statement of the state of the finances of the state of Illinois. The passage and implementation of this act has moved very quickly, in fact, at a breakneck pace, leaving local governments like the village of Vernon Hills with several important decisions to make and actions to take in a short period of time relative to the regulation of the cannabis industry as it now works its way full swing into the state of Illinois. There are several main issues and questions for a local government to consider and for our board to consider. First, should the sale of recreational cannabis be allowed in the community? If no, the board must adopt an opt-out ordinance on or before December 31 prohibiting the sale of recreational cannabis in Vernon Hills. If the answer is yes, also by December 31, the board must establish zoning restrictions that govern the location of cannabis business establishments. Second issue for the board to consider if there is not going to be an opt-out is whether or not to impose a tax on the sale and at what rate. The law allows for a 3% tax rate on the purchase price of cannabis at a local dispensary. Third item for the board to consider, if, again, no opt-out, is whether or not onsite cannabis lounges will be allowed that permit the onsite consumption. And then there are two issues that must be addressed by all village governments regardless of whether or not there's an opt-out. And the first is how your village code will be amended or must be amended to create ordinances that address the unlawful use, possession, and sale of cannabis. And secondly, the village, as an employer, like many other employers, will have to look at whether or not the personnel policy manuals and union contracts must be addressed. So with that, I want to get into a little bit of history and where we've been so far, and I'll start with the Medical Cannabis Pilot Act, which was effective January 1 of 2014. That's been around now for five years. At that time, we all worked very hard to create zoning ordinances that governed where these facilities could be located. At that time, the state of Illinois created a law that allowed for registered qualified patients to obtain medical cannabis through dispensaries that were located in different areas throughout the state. There are currently 56 medical dispensaries authorized with 20 cultivation centers statewide. There are significant differences between the Medical Cannabis Act and what we see now under the current law. The Medical Cannabis Act preempted municipal regulatory authority. What that means is that municipalities could not say no to the sale of medical cannabis in their communities. The best we could do at that time was to create zoning districts where medical dispensaries or medical cultivation centers could be located, and that's what all the towns did. Vernon Hills did so, as well as all the other neighboring communities. Vernon Hills does not have a medical cannabis dispensary. The Medical Cannabis Act also had in it, which does not exist in this current act, distance restrictions. Under the Medical Cannabis Act, cultivation centers could not locate within 2,500 feet of what have been called sensitive areas. And you'll see up on the slide, those sensitive areas are public or private preschools, elementary schools, daycare centers, et cetera. There was also distance requirements for the location of medical dispensing organizations, which provided that they could not locate within 1,000 feet of sensitive locations. Distance restrictions like those do not exist in the current law. Distance restrictions, if a community is to allow for a cannabis dispensary to sell recreational marijuana, can be imposed by a municipality, but it's up to each municipality. My law firm represents multiple municipalities. I've seen distance requirements anywhere from 500 feet to 1,500 feet or 2,000 feet. You don't even have to have distance requirements. So there are some significant differences between the two acts in that regard. The Medical Cannabis Act was recently amended in August of this year. It's no longer a pilot program. More qualifying conditions were added to obtain medical cannabis. You see the conditions here. There are 13 additional conditions that would qualify one if a doctor wrote a prescription: migraine, headaches, osteoarthritis. You're seeing some conditions that many, many people have that now make it, I think, easier to get a medical card. And the Medical Act has been amended also to allow for not only a doctor to certify the need for medical cannabis, it added a registered nurse as well as a physician's assistant. That takes us to the new Act of Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. This act legally authorizes the private use and possession for adults 21 years and up. A municipality that decides, as we talked about, that it does not want to allow for the sale of recreational cannabis in its community must pass an opt-out ordinance. I want everybody to keep in mind, you can opt out of allowing the sale of cannabis in your community. You cannot opt out or prohibit or prevent the use of cannabis in your community. Cannabis is a lawful drug now under this act that can be used in accordance with the regulations we find under the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. So, once you get past the opt-out ordinance, we must look to zoning. We can pass, if we don't opt out, you can pass an ordinance that significantly limits cannabis business establishments' locations. We may not prohibit home cultivation by medical cannabis patients. Many of you, I'm sure, have looked at the law. Medical cannabis patients are going to be allowed to home-grow cannabis, up to five plants, and that's pretty heavily restricted, but we cannot prohibit that. And you cannot unreasonably prohibit the use of cannabis, as I just talked about. So with the new law, there are several new players that we see in the cannabis industry that municipalities are going to have to deal with. Six, six in total. There are craft growers, which are, in essence, small cultivation centers. They range from 3,000 square feet to a max of 14,000 square feet of cultivation space under canopy. These are, again, smaller cultivation centers that grow marijuana, that grow cannabis. There's a required 1,500-foot distance between craft growers and cultivation centers. There's the adult-use cannabis cultivation center. This is the large-scale producer of marijuana products. There have been medical cannabis cultivation centers, so there's not a great deal of difference between the two types of entities. This is, again, a very large-scale operation. The maximum, there's a maximum of 210,000 square feet of cultivation space. There are distance requirements for cultivation centers. They cannot be located any closer than 1,500 feet to other cultivation centers or to a craft grower. The third type of new player in the cannabis industry is the infuser. This can be thought of as a commercial kitchen, essentially. The infuser creates cannabis-infused products, edibles, so to speak. This is more of an industrial use, but I think the easiest way to think about it is as a commercial kitchen. There's a processing organization which essentially extracts compounds to produce cannabis concentrate that is incorporated into products. That's, again, more of an industrial-type use. And then we get to dispensing organizations, which are going to be similar to the medical dispensing organizations, and that are primarily what municipalities are going to be regulating. And then the last one is the cannabis transporting organization. The product has to get from place to place. This is another type of business that's now in the market. This business transports cannabis on behalf of cultivation centers, craft growers, et cetera, to get it to where it needs to be. This is another licensed business. All of the businesses I've addressed, the cannabis business establishments, are licensed by the state of Illinois. The local governments have no role in licensing cannabis business establishments. We might have a very slight role in business licensing, but that's a matter of determining whether or not a building meets village codes, et cetera. We have no role, again, in licensing the sale of this product. So what can the village do? What is the zoning authority that the act provides us? And this, all of this applies only if there is no opt-out. If there's an opt-out ordinance adopted, there's no need to get to the zoning aspect. But this is informational, and if there is no opt-out and a community decides that it's going to allow for the sale, you can restrict the different types of cannabis business establishments by zoning district. You can restrict hours of operation. State law says that a dispensary can operate from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We believe that with a special-use zoning ordinance, you can tighten up those hours to minimize impacts on neighboring properties. You can regulate the proximity of cannabis business establishments to schools, parks, churches. These have been called sensitive areas under the law. You can also decide you're only going to allow dispensaries and not allow for cultivation centers, craft growers, infusers, processors, or transportation centers. You can limit the total number of dispensaries that a community will allow. You can, for example, say, "We want to allow two," and your ordinances can provide for that. The only distance requirement we see in this act that's mandated is that a dispensing organization may not be located within 1,500 feet of another dispensing organization. And that in and of itself, that's a pretty large distance. That's going to restrict where dispensing organizations can locate, depending on the size of a community. I talked a little bit about cannabis lounges. The law allows the creation of what have been called cannabis cafes or lounges in the discretion of the village. These lounges are not deemed a public place within the meaning of the Smoke Free Illinois Law. The product of cannabis, marijuana products, can be consumed onsite in cannabis lounges, including smoking of marijuana in these cannabis lounges. Probably easy to compare this to a cigar lounge. Now, there's rumor that there's a trailer bill that's going to be passed by the legislature that's going to address cannabis lounges. There's a lot of confusion surrounding this, and it may come to be that cannabis lounges are not going to be allowed at all. But currently, that is another area of the law that municipalities can consider as they move forward. So we talked about zoning authority. Where will, if the village decides not to opt out, the village will have to decide what district a dispensary, for example, would be allowed. Back in 2014, the village, under the Medical Cannabis Act, prepared and approved some zoning legislation that essentially called a dispensary a special use and located it in the Business Park District. And at the same time, the village zoned medical cultivation centers a special use in the B1 General Business District. If the village, again, decides not to opt out, the village can decide where these medical, I'm sorry, cannabis businesses will be located and what type of use they would fall under. Will they be a permitted use, or will they be a special use? We've recommended in towns that special uses be considered because you can condition special uses, and the conditions are generally designed to, again, minimize impact on neighboring properties. It's going to be a delicate dance to do that with all of the restrictions placed on municipalities in terms of how we regulate, but we do believe that if there is no opt-out, a special use would be the proper way to go. As I talked about a little bit earlier, local ordinances, the Vernon Hills Village Code, will be amended to establish civil penalties that address violations of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, and that's going to be true regardless of whether or not the village opts out. The state has restrictions on advertising. The advertising restrictions are pretty stringent. What these restrictions state is that no cannabis business establishment can advertise within 1,000 feet of several, what I have called, sensitive areas: parks, schools, game arcades that admit persons under the age of 21. And advertising also cannot promote, and there's on the right side of this slide, advertising will not be allowed to promote the overconsumption of cannabis. It cannot display cannabis, cannot show someone underage consuming, it cannot make health or medical claims, cannot include the image of a cannabis leaf or bud, cannot include images that are likely to appeal to minors. There's going to be a lot of room for interpretation, I think, over some of this. They cannot be on publicly-owned or publicly-operated property, cannot be on a public transportation vehicle or in a transportation shelter, and advertising cannot be false or misleading. If the community decides not to opt out and to zone for the sale of dispensaries, an amendment to the sign code will likely be necessary in order to incorporate some of the restrictions we see. Several restrictions on the operation of a dispensary, all of which would likely be included in a special-use ordinance as conditions to the ordinance. Hours, as I stated, are from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. It's our opinion that those can be shortened reasonably, that you don't have to go that full range that's allowed. There's no delivery allowed under the state law. Cannabis cannot be delivered in communities that do not opt out of the sale of recreational cannabis. And there are multiple prohibitions regarding the sale. Sale is prohibited when video surveillance equipment is inoperative. The state, in fact, the state police will be looking at licenses and the security systems for dispensaries and cultivation centers for that matter. And one of the key points is our surveillance systems. So you can't sell when that system's inoperative. You cannot sell when point-of-sale equipment is inoperative, when the state's cannabis electronic verification system is inoperative, when there are fewer than two people working. Dispensaries cannot sell alcohol-based products. All the product that's sold must be packaged and labeled with the name of the dispensing organization, the contents, the weight of the raw cannabis, and the amount of THC in the product. The age of each purchaser must be verified by checking a government-issued identification card by use of an electronic reader or electronic scanning device to scan the identification. There's been some real care taken to avoid a human error when selling cannabis to someone who might be underage. And specific required sales information on each sale must be entered into the state's cannabis electronic verification system. What's prohibited under the act? No smoking, there will not be smoking, or smoking of cannabis is not allowed in any public place where a person could reasonably be expected to be observed by others in a healthcare facility or in any other place where smoking is prohibited. Public place includes outdoors and in public buildings, much like this building or the village hall. A private residence is not a public place unless used for childcare, foster care, or other social services. You cannot use or operate a motor vehicle while under the influence of cannabis. There cannot be sales of cannabis by the use of vending machines. Relative to the possession limits under the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, if you are 21 years or older, you can possess 30 grams of the raw cannabis flower, 500 milligrams or less of THC of cannabis-infused products, 5 grams of cannabis products in concentrated form. For non-residents of Illinois, there are different limitations. For non-residents in those three categories, it's exactly one-half of the amounts of each that are allowed. There are other additional limitations for the use of recreational cannabis. You cannot use or possess cannabis on school grounds unless you're a medical cardholder. You cannot use or possess in a correctional facility, cannot use in a vehicle that's open to the public, cannot use in a school bus unless, again, a medical cardholder, or in public places, as we discussed. There are regulations regarding the underage possession and use of false identification by someone that's underage relative to purchasing cannabis. As we talked about, someone under 21 cannot possess cannabis. If you're caught with cannabis under the age of 21, the new state law provides that that's a civil violation punishable by a fine. If you use a fake ID to purchase cannabis and you're caught, that's a Class A misdemeanor, and your driver's license can be subject to being suspended or revoked, which is very similar to the liquor laws. And what the legislature has done is try to make this law comparable to the liquor code relative to the enforcement of age restrictions. My last slide relates to home-grow limitations. Cannabis can only be grown by medical cannabis patients 21 years or older, or their authorized agent attending to the patient, for example, a caregiver. You must own the property on which you're growing the cannabis or have consent from the owner. A landlord in an apartment complex can prohibit the use of cannabis in an apartment through a lease as well as the growth of cannabis in that apartment. You must be an Illinois resident to grow cannabis at home and domiciled in the state for 30 days at a minimum before the growing is allowed. Cannabis plants cannot be cultivated in areas subject to public ordinary view. That's another restriction. And finally, you can not exceed five, the five-plant limit that the state provides. And if you're caught exceeding the five-plant limit or giving away cannabis that you grow due to your medical condition, there are statutory penalties, including the loss of the home-grow privileges. So with that, I'm going to turn over the mic to my associate, Carmen Forte. Carmen's going to touch briefly on a couple of matters: state licensing, some of the hot-button law enforcement issues, which the police chief will get into in depth, and finally, taxation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I just have a few more slides on some of the issues that Jim mentioned. The first slide you have up now talks about who is going to be able to sell or produce cannabis in the state of Illinois, specifically in a municipality such as Vernon Hills, if they were to opt in. First, there's early approval for existing medical cannabis cultivators and dispensers. Now, these establishments can apply to convert to, in whole or in part, to sell recreational cannabis. As you can see here, there is a pretty hefty permit fee, application fee, that has to be paid upfront. It can also be based on their previous profits for the sale of medical cannabis over the last year or so. Medical cannabis facilities have the ability to apply for a secondary license, which we believe would be at a secondary location. Now, the village of Vernon Hills does not have a medical cannabis dispensary within its borders. If it were to opt in, a medical facility could reasonably petition or apply to have a secondary location here within the village or in any other municipality. The new entrants, which we probably won't see until later next year, have a slightly lower permit and application fee, and their location would depend on local zoning. It wouldn't be tied to any specific medical facility that's currently existing. In addition, the state police is going to conduct background checks on every single person who's involved in the cultivation, transportation, dispensing, and production of cannabis, no matter what role that they have in that process. So taxation. How are local municipalities or the state going to make money off of recreational cannabis? State tax, as you can see, is on varying levels depending on the level of THC within the product itself. Anything with less than 35% THC is going to be taxed on the state level at 10%. Cannabis-infused products, for instance, edibles or other products that have a slightly higher concentration, would be taxed at 20%, even if their concentration was under 35%. Anything over 35% would be taxed at 25% at the state level. Now, the state statute indicates that 8% of the state taxes that are collected, in addition to any other fees, including licensing fees and permit fees, would be allocated to local municipalities in the LGDF, which is the Local Government Distributive Fund. There are stated in the statute specific uses for those monies that local municipalities can use the funds for, including crime prevention, law enforcement training, and drug interdiction efforts, in addition to other types of programs. Now, on the local level, cannabis, a local municipality can impose up to a 3% tax on the purchase price, so the end user's price of recreational cannabis. This is on top of the regular sales tax, so it's a retailer's occupation tax in addition to the medical, or, excuse me, recreational cannabis sales tax. The State Department of Revenue will collect and enforce the tax, and then will distribute it back to the local municipalities, of course, after taking a small fee for its administration. And the tax ordinances, as indicated in the bill, which, if you'll remember earlier, the bill was signed on June 25, 2019, the statute itself actually said, or the bill said, that an ordinance had to be in effect by June 1 for it to, and it had to be in effect by June 1 for collection in September. Well, recreational cannabis isn't going to be for sale until January 1. Now, the current statute, as Jim mentioned, is possibly under consideration for a trailer bill, which could include enforcement of these local taxes as early as January 1, if the local ordinance is brought to the state before a certain date. It has been talked about October 1, but as we all know, it's been pretty fluid, and there's been nothing on the table so far in the legislature. Now, medical marijuana, or medical cannabis, is not subject to this 3% additional local tax. It is taxed, it can be taxed, at one- It is taxed, it can be taxed at 1% as prescription and non-prescription drugs. So where's the money going to go? The Cannabis Regulation Fund is going to take all of the profit from the taxes on the state level and from the license and permit fees, application fees, and pool it into one fund. That's also going to include everything that comes in from medical cannabis. The old fund is going to be dissolved from medical cannabis and combined into the new fund. Now, the statute's fairly vague. It says that the state agencies that are responsible for administering the adult-use cannabis program will receive essentially their cut for doing the work that they have to do. It doesn't indicate what percentage that is. We don't know. There are many different state agencies that are going to be involved in the administration of these programs: agriculture, revenue, state police, everything that's left, which the state is likely going to indicate on a yearly basis, is going to be allocated as indicated on the slide. So of that 100%, there are, you'll see at the bottom, 8% transferred to the LGDF for other local efforts related to recreational cannabis. You'll have to excuse me, we're going to skip through a few slides. So Chief is going to talk a bit about the criminal and law enforcement aspects of legalization of cannabis, but just on a basic level, driving under the influence of cannabis is going to continue to remain illegal. The Act allows for the use of standardized roadside chemical testing, similar to a PBT, a portable breath test, or a breathalyzer inside of a police station, to detect the presence of THC in one person's blood. That's something that would be standardized by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. However, there isn't anything that's nationally standardized to this day to allow for roadside testing. There have been some tests and some trials in other states that seem to be effective, but right now, we don't have a standardized test that allows for something that would be considered in court as evidence in a DUI trial. Similar to refusing to submit to a chemical test for the presence of alcohol in your blood, refusing to submit to a test for the presence of THC in your blood will result in the suspension of your driver's license. There are several types of offenses that will be automatically expunged under the statute related to cannabis possession. There will be automatic expungements for what we see here on the slide. The next slide talks about the calendar for when that's going to occur over the next four, five, or six years, I believe. These types of offenses that will be expunged are typically related to arrests that did not result in a charge or a conviction. There are other rules that allow for applications for expungements and directing the local state prosecutors to move on to those, the offenses that resulted in more criminal activity or in court-enforced activity. As I indicated, there is a rolling schedule for when these expungements are going to occur, and it goes out as far as 2025. Okay, so the next steps that the village will have to consider, depending on whether a later decision is made to opt in or out, is to amend the village code if the village were to opt in. If not, if the village were to opt out, an opt-out ordinance would be prepared and presented to the village board for its approval. If the village does opt in, we would prepare and have presented to the village board zoning and business license code amendments and forms for regulating or prohibiting cannabis business establishments, or CBEs. We prepare a sales tax ordinance on the sliding scale that allows up to 3% of a local tax. We would address the local law enforcement concerns with regard to the possession of cannabis for individuals who were not of legal age or for cannabis that was not legally possessed. We would work with the village to update its employments and policy manuals with regard to recreational cannabis use. That's going to be done even if the village does not opt in. We'll also address updates to the police general orders and standard operating procedures and look at the various labor contracts with the village's labor unions. So if there are any questions, I'm not sure if we're going to take them now, or no? Thank you so much for your time.
I'm not sure who I should be looking at. Marvelous, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Aaron Weiner. I'm the Director of Addiction Services at Lyndon Oaks Behavioral Health. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist, and I live close to here. I'm actually not a Vernon Hills resident, but I live in Long Grove. And so the decisions around where I raised my family are very important to me. And from my vantage point, which is overseeing the strategic direction of five different addiction clinics and a detox unit in a hospital system, I've been very concerned about aspects of this for quite some time, and I've spoken out about it fairly frequently. And so what I'd like to talk to you about today are some of the science behind this, some of the data behind this, and some of the concerns that the medical and addiction community has in terms of promoting the use of marijuana in a town, in a state, et cetera. And I say promote because that is what this does. And what you're seeing here is public use, which of course theoretically is not legal. However, it happens. It happens all over the place. And if you have been to Colorado, if you've been to Seattle, if you've been to Oregon, if you've been to California, which I was about six months ago, you'll know. You'll know. It happens everywhere. I've even gotten calls from random people saying that it happens, and the police do not have the time to enforce it. So when we're talking about encouraging use, which is really what these policies do, there's a lot of concerns within this community. And the primary mechanism for this is that when you have more access, you have more use. You have less access, you have less use. And we could go into this in great detail, but this is the national-level data from the SAMZA survey. Actually, there was just another one released from the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Unit, area, rather, about four days ago that had an even higher number than this. But the long story short is that adult use has increased in Colorado by 42% over the last eight years and continues to go up. And we've seen similar increases in other places. I think the HIDA report actually put it at 90%. So I'm not sure the different servers that they were looking at for this. But this isn't just simply moving something from a black market into a legal market. This is creating a lot more users of a product that has a number of negative implications with it. Here's just another graph, and again, we could dive into it, looking at legalization, commercialization, and what happens over time. But the bottom line is, it goes up. Because again, you raise access, you raise accessibility. In terms of local control, this is the big question, right? And what we're looking at right now is what difference does it make if you opt out? And the data about that is not nearly as robust as I would like it to be. I was really scouring around, trying to find what I could. I found two articles that are published in peer-reviewed scientific journals, which is my standard for evidence as a psychologist, as a healthcare professional. I don't like to go with anecdote for what people think that they say. I like to go with government publications, and I like to go with medical publications. The two that I found were from medical dispensaries, but basically what they found is, this one's showing, is that living near more dispensaries is positively associated with more frequent use of marijuana within the past month and greater expectation of its positive benefits, as well as exposure to advertising. And there was one other study that found the same. So essentially, the more dispensaries in an area tends to be the more young adult use of that product. So it's worth mentioning as well, this is why we passed Tobacco 21, the idea that less access leads to less use. So the idea there was that 21 and under would have less access to nicotine products, thereby reducing their rates. So this is the opposite of that. We've decided that the entirety of the state over 21 now has more access to a drug. And so again, what should we expect? Additionally, most communities opt out, actually, historically across our country. So if you choose to opt in, you are bringing in marijuana traffic, which means that you want to be known for this, you want this to be what people come to your town for. Colorado was 70% of municipalities opting out, Michigan was 74, and California was 78. So it's important to understand that if Illinois follows the trend that other states have, it means you're going to be a destination for this. And it's not necessarily just your citizens who will be doing it. So the more local use, the more local health and safety consequences. Worth mentioning, it kind of boggles me that, and hopefully the trailer bill removes the lounges, that these lounges have even been suggested. There are huge issues with driving impairment in regard to marijuana and the lack of what we know and our ability to test it. So you're literally creating a place where people will impair themselves and then leave somehow. You know, like, go figure, but hopefully those get removed. More THC, more consequences. So it's really important to recognize here, our state did not put caps on concentration, and it's a lot higher than it used to be. Woodstock pot was 3% to 4% THC. Today's pot is a lot higher. In 2012, it was up to 12%. Today's average potency is 20.8%. That's like lighting seven Woodstock joints up at once and smoking them for every one of today's. And the concentrates and extracts, which you heard our legal professionals refer to, you know, at 35% and up, these go up to 85, 90, 95% pure THC. So this is a whole different kind of product from when it got its reputation, much, 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 much stronger, which is part of what's leading to a lot of the negative problems that we're seeing in this state. It looks like that down there on the bottom, not really too much of a bud anymore. So what are these issues? At the state level, you look at this, and again, I mention this because the question is, if you bring this traffic in, if you're providing this easily accessible to your residents, will this increase these, will we see these increases locally as well? The jury's still out on this. There was a study in Colorado that's got national attention in March that found that emergency department visits tripled. And there were two different ways in which they tripled. One was for cannabinoid hyperemesis syndrome, and I don't think I have it on here, but actually, there was just a study yesterday that found that someone died from it. So if someone says that no one's ever died from marijuana use, there's a number of reasons why that's untrue, actually. This is just one of them. What cannabinoid hyperemesis syndrome is, is when you have severe abdominal pain and you cannot stop vomiting. And this young man, 17 years old, died of dehydration secondary to cannabinoid hyperemesis syndrome because you just can't stop. And you're screaming at the same time. It's actually really unfortunate to see and hear. If you talk to emergency department physicians, they will know about this because they happen already, they just triple when you provide these high potency products readily accessible to your public. This was another one that made national news in March. This was a study out of Europe that was published in Lancet Psychiatry, one of the most prestigious journals we have, looking at the link between high potency marijuana products and psychosis, because actually, that is one of the strongest links we have between marijuana and any health outcome, positive or negative, is that it's highly linked to psychosis. What they found was that 12.2 cases of first-episode psychosis could have been prevented across 11 cities in Europe if not for marijuana use, including 30% in London and 50% in Amsterdam. If you use regular high potency marijuana, which is what it all is right now, your rate of developing schizophrenia went up by 50%. If you use the concentrates, they went up by 500%. And just last week, we had another admission to this to Lyndon Oaks. We have a 108-bed psychiatric hospital. At any given point in time, we have two kids, at any given point in time in there, with having marijuana-induced psychotic breaks. It doesn't happen to everyone, of course not. That would be ridiculous, but it happens a lot more often than you think. I was at a Plainfield High School doing a presentation, actually, an assembly for their student body last week, and one of their assistant principals said that they'd had three hospitalizations for marijuana consumption in three weeks in their school. So again, this is not something, this is not a benign substance. This is happening all the time. Now, something else to recognize in terms of the research and how we're really putting the cart in front of the horse here, is that one of the things that we heard a lot was that swapping marijuana in for opioids would be useful in terms of reducing opioid mortality. And there was a study that was trumpeted about how there was a 21% reduction in opioid mortality. Well, that study used data from 99 to 2010, and it was just rerun. This was from June. The same exact data, same exact methods was redone with data through 2017, and what they found was that it reversed. And now the people, the states that had this particular pot law, and we are among them, swung to the other side, and now they have 23% more opioid deaths from substituting that in. So there's a lot of things in terms of what we bring in and what we're encouraging in our public, that when we look at the data fully and we look at new data, things change. This one is particularly concerning for me. I've spent a lot of time working on the opioid epidemic personally. This is a study, and we've had more than one of these, that shows that if you use marijuana recreationally, your odds ratio of developing a new prescription pill opioid disorder is five to eight times as high. Five to eight times as high. So we've just done this in the middle of an opioid epidemic. This is within three years. So this is what a time bomb looks like. It'll be very unfortunate to see what happens in our state in three years if these data show through. So what I want to talk about as well, because I think it's important to understand, is what's going on right now in the marijuana market? Because what we are, I mean, here in Illinois, because this is what we're talking about: expanding, promoting, and endorsing if we choose to move forward. So I have some screenshots here from the medical dispensary that we have in Naperville, called the Compassionate Care Center. And they all pretty much sell the same things, actually. So if you want to look up your local ones, you'll see the same thing. Quick show of hands, how many of you have been to a marijuana dispensary website or been into a dispensary? A minority, all right. So this might be really insightful for you. So here's what they're selling. And if you look at the names of these products, 707 Headband, Blue Cheese, Alien Rock Candy, Durban Poison, Bio Jesus, Flo, He Heals, He Heals, don't forget that, Grape God Bud, Ghost Train Haze, Gorilla Glue Number Four, Gumbo, Sweet Island Skunk, Platinum Girl Scout Cookies. If you thought Girl Scout Cookies couldn't get any better, then behold. And OG-18. And who here knows what OG stands for? Original Gangster. Yeah, Original Gangster. So here's the thing about this, and their advertising is winning the High Times Cannabis Cup in '09 and '10, which it didn't win because it was so good for glaucoma. So like, here's the thing, this has never been marketed, marketed at 65-year-old women with MS. It's just not, you could call this anything if you wanted to. Advil, you wouldn't know what it was named, what it did unless someone told you. Tylenol is the same way, Mucinex maybe like a little bit. You could call this whatever you want. This is on purpose. This is for a reason. And here's another one, again, straight from the website. Most are just like this. I want to read this to you because it blew my mind. "RSO Ghost Train Haze refers to an extremely potent decarboxylated extracts produced from strong sedative induced range which have THC levels in the 90% range. This harmless, non-addictive, natural medication can..." That's not true, by the way. THC is addictive. "...can be used with great success to cure or control cancer, MS, pine diabetes, et cetera, and just about any other medical issues that one can imagine." I'm not making this up. You could go on their website right now and see this. And so this is the current market. These are how they're marketed, this is how it's done. And so this is the sort of thing that we're talking about encouraging and endorsing and selling out of Vernon Hills. Green Crack, this is again, just pulled straight from the website with a THC content there of 27%. Green Crack. Again, who is this marketed at? Who is this speaking to? What are we encouraging? This is the medical program, guys. This is the medical program. And what's interesting as well is that when I show this to legislators, they did not think that they voted for this, but they voted for this. Worth mentioning as well, you guys might have seen this in the Daily Herald, there was an article about this, but PDI Medical in Buffalo Grove was handing out their hats and swag to children at Buffalo Grove Days. And I don't have a, from the article, the caption here, but they didn't apologize. They released a statement that basically just said, "We try to market mostly at adults, but kids use this too, and it's good for them." Read it, again, look it up, Daily Herald. I'm not making this up. And so this is the industry in the market that currently exists right now. I'm just, I'm pulling from their website, I'm pulling from the papers. So when we choose to move forward, it's critical that we understand who the industry is, what they do, and the fact that we want more of this. We want more of this in our community. So I want to leave you with this. Again, to really break home this point, greater population exposure leads to greater use and greater addiction and more negative consequences. It is a complete myth that it is not addictive, by the way. It's addictive the same way that alcohol is, where you don't get hooked on it immediately, but if you use it and use it and use it and use it, you will become addicted to it. It is the second most common substance that I treat in my addiction centers in adults and the most common substance for children. There are documented physiological withdrawal symptoms in both animal models and humans. So if anyone tries to tell you that it's not addictive, that is patently false. Whatever our goals were behind this, creating, supporting, and enabling big marijuana still actually isn't the answer, and a lot of people weren't aware. The American Medical Association was opposed to this. The American Society of Addiction Medicine, the Illinois Academy of Family Physicians, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Laurie Children's Hospital released their own statement, by the way, the state chiefs of police, and the NAACP. Because the NAACP knows that the way you raise up and restore a community isn't selling pot to your neighbors. Again, look this up, look this up. That's not what raises a community, they were patently against it. And so to put this in frame for you, do these ads look familiar? Because this is another very similar industry that started the same way, that more doctors smoke. smoke Camels than any other cigarette. And the 20,000 physicians say Luckies are less irritating. This one is saying, "Use nicotine to avoid gaining weight, avoid the shock of facing what your future may become and see where they've got like jowls." Because you smoke, right, and that speeds up your metabolism because it's a stimulant. So they're touting the weight loss of cigarettes. And, you know, Chesterfield, now scientific evidence on the effects of smoking, he's probably not that happy because he's dying of lung cancer. But you can see how they spin it, right? So our perspective has changed on things before. We used to sell cocaine in cough drops, and we sold heroin off the shelf. And more recently, we used to smoke on airplanes, which is lighting something on fire 30,000 feet over the earth in a cabin, like a tin can with recirculated air. And we thought that that was a good idea. And, and this is part of why we have to be so careful. This is from the CDC's website. "Every state that's white there still does not ban smoking by law in even one indoor establishment, even though we know that smoking causes cancer." This lasts for a very, very, very long time. So we have an opportunity right now to opt out and find out, which I think is a very useful way to look at this, because there are communities that have already decided to treat their citizens like a Petri dish, because we do not know what's going to happen. To give you an example, the state of Colorado has seen massive crime increases since they legalized. Other states that have legalized have not. There was just an article published, I'm forgetting the paper, but if you Google it, in California, how the black market is still triple the size of the white market. And if you look into this as well, cartels tend to move in. We don't know what's going to happen here. We don't know. And so the question really becomes, do we want to be the ones who experiment with our population? Or if people are so quick to want to bring that money in?
No!
Oh. Okay. Thank you, yeah. Or do we want to wait and see? Because data actually will come out within the next probably 18 to 24 months. And to be perfectly frank with you, although I may never be actively supporting this, if it turns out that it doesn't matter, and that the state made their decision, and now we all have to live with it, even if it goes poorly, that's a different question than maybe it is just about money. But right now, we don't know, and there's a lot of compelling reasons why there might be more to this decision at the local level than that. We have an opportunity to send a message to our community and especially our youth and young adults about whether we endorse and promote getting high as recreation. And it's important to mention as well, I would be feeling, I would be saying the same thing if we were enacting a policy that encouraged more people to get drunk, encouraged more people to drive drunk, that made our roads less safe. I am not for policies that make our towns less healthy, less safe, and less productive, regardless of the substance, and that's what these policies do. I say put people over profits, let's stay safe, healthy, and productive. And I say opt out. So thank you.
All right, we'd like to keep the program going, please. Hello, we'd like to keep the program going. So my name is Patrick Crease, I'm the chief of police here in Vernon Hills. I have probably some slides that maybe you may not expect a chief to present, because what I'm not going to do, even though I did lobby with the Illinois Chiefs of Police against this law, I'm not going to spend time tonight talking about what a terrible decision that was made. That decision has been made. What I want to do is give the village board some considerations during the time of lobbying and over the last couple of years of what I've learned has been the experiences in some of the other jurisdictions, so that the board can take that into consideration as we go forward. I want to start by reminding the public, I think it's very important to remember that many uses of marijuana are going to continue to be illegal after January 1, 2020. I don't want people to mistakenly violate the law and get in trouble because they think everything is going to be a green light and go. So obviously, possession of illegal cannabis, so you're only going to be able to possess legally purchased cannabis. Any more than 30 grams of cannabis will be a crime. Consuming in a public place, in public view, or in the presence of, or in a motor vehicle, and consuming in the presence of a person under the age of 21. Driving while under the influence of cannabis, although we certainly have some enforcement challenges with that. Private cultivation, given with the exception laid out by the attorneys, and private sales. The four areas that I'm going to briefly touch on, because we want to move on to hearing from the members of the public, coincide with this. The lack of federal oversight. A lot of people want to, you know, compare this to liquor and alcohol sales, but in fact, there's a tremendous amount of federal regulation that goes into that. All of this regulation is going to fall on the state of Illinois and on local authorities when you consider some of these concerns. Advertising promotional challenges, dispensary location challenges, and some other concerns related to this new commercialized activity. So as an example of lack of federal oversight, these are all confiscated products that you could purchase legally purchase in some other jurisdictions. Illinois, in passing their law, thought they're getting ahead of this, and so there's a specific provision in Illinois law that packaging cannot resemble commercially available candy, period. My question is, is a Pop-Tart candy, these are also products, and what you'll see here is, you know, that's a Pop-Tart, this is a Pot-Tart. These are cannabis-infused Pot-Tarts. Is a cookie candy? But what you may not know is that in many jurisdictions that have legalized these edible cannabis-infused products, people mistakenly overconsume them. Maybe they wind up at a friend's house, maybe a child gets their hand on this, and what you see in all these jurisdictions is that hospitalizations due to overconsumption of cannabis skyrocket. Not 20, 30%, 200, 300% is common. My question is, who's going to be responsible for watching to see the right product on the shelf in a dispensary? Because if it's all on the state of Illinois, I would suggest it's going to take the state of Illinois some time to get up to speed on that. When I mentioned advertising promotional concerns, I was in a presentation about two years ago with officials from the state of Washington, and they told me that this was their number one challenge as a community, is dealing with all the complaints with advertising. And I was completely blown away. I had no idea that would be a law enforcement concern or a community relations concern for a community. But you find that the folks that operate these things use a lot of creativity in narrowly sparcing the law that covers their advertising rules. You heard about Illinois's rules. I've looked at Illinois's rules, and you could certainly see something like this on the outskirts of our jurisdictions, but I don't see anything in the Illinois rules that would prohibit someone from posting a sign like this out on 94 as you approach Town Line Road. Whose problem is this going to be? And what does the brand of Vernon Hills mean when people see a sign like this? When I mentioned dispensary location challenges, again, many people in the audience may have never smelled marijuana, and I imagine many people probably have. And we know it stinks. Cannabis has an odor, particularly the leafy and the bud product. Many of the consumables don't, but many do. But the locations, the dispensary locations, have been riddled with complaints connected to the odor, and this is an actual device to measure the odor outside of a cannabis, either a cultivation center, a craft grower, or a dispensary. Illicit activities related to the sale. So here's the bottom line. Criminals are going to exploit this law. Criminals by definition are going to violate the law. They are going to find ways to use a legal product and exploit it to their own gain. And there's a lot to be learned in the state of Illinois. And no one in this room can go to Walmart, Walgreens, or Target, or CVS, and purchase cold medicine without displaying a driver's license, and more importantly, having that ID put into a statewide central repository that's actually part of a federal central repository, because we've learned our lessons the hard way, that legal products will be exploited by criminals to use for illegal purposes. And there's nothing in this law that prohibits a person from spending their day driving around to dispensary after dispensary, purchasing 30 grams at each location, and then stockpiling that, and then reselling that illegally. I admit, that will be committing a crime. We will do our best to enforce that, but we will be, we will have a real challenge on our hand. And I think these are some of the shortcomings in the Illinois law that over the course of the next, I would agree with a doctor, probably 18, 24 months, I hope. In fact, some of the supporters in state legislature told me they knew there were shortcomings in this law, and that they'll address it in the future. My suggestion is, there's probably wisdom in watching some of those challenges be overcome in other communities before we take all of those on ourself. So with that, Mark?
So as the village board resumes their seat, the village manager is going to come up and give some introductory remarks and set the stage for public comment.
I just want to take a moment, there's a lot of people in the room, and if the whole room claps, or cheers, or boos after everyone speaks, it's going to waste all of your time. So please hold your comments until the end, or hold your applause to the end. There's a lot of people that want to speak here tonight, so please, let's try and be respectful and keep the process moving. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, that's my comments. Again, as was announced at the beginning, in order, there's a lot of people here today, I'm estimating probably better than 250, because that's the seating capacity. I don't know how many people wish to speak. Anyone is willing, anyone is welcome to speak. We're asking that you limit your comments to three minutes to allow other people the opportunity to speak. And as Chief Crease says, please be civil. You expect your viewpoint to be heard. Please respect other people's viewpoints as well. They may not be the same as yours, but let's respect them just the same. Well, here's what we've got. We've got two microphones at the bottom of each stair, so anyone that wishes to speak, please step on down to the microphone. We're asking you to identify yourself, at least the street you live on, and the town you live in.
Okay. I think... I'm the official time. Can we do it?
My name is Maya Gopal, and I'm a sophomore at Stevenson High School. I'm part of Stevenson's Catalyst Club, which is a club dedicated to preventing youth drug use among youth. Throughout my time in Catalyst, I have been passionate about advocating against the legalization and commercialization of marijuana in Illinois. However, due to recent events in which state lawmakers decided to move forward the legalization process this past June, and based on information I have gathered and studied, I believe that the best thing for our communities to do is opt out of recreational marijuana sales. I believe all villages share in their desire to create and maintain a safe and family-friendly environment for their residents. I believe in order to maintain this environment, it is necessary to create policies and discourage businesses and activities which threaten the public safety of present and future residents. Allowing a retail marijuana dispensary into our community would certainly be a policy that threatens the safety of our residents, not only individuals, but the community as well. Having a retail marijuana dispensary would undoubtedly infringe upon public safety, especially the road safety of residents. In Colorado, for example, between 2013 and 2017, the number of traffic deaths where a driver tested positive for marijuana more than doubled. If we were to allow retail marijuana dispensaries into this community, we can expect to see a sharp increase in many more THC impaired drivers and the fatalities and injuries that come along with that. I believe that communities also pride themselves on being family-friendly. This too would be threatened by a retail marijuana dispensary. A recent study found that actually a greater number of marijuana dispensary storefronts in a community led to an increase in marijuana usage among young adults. We can expect to see the issue of teen marijuana usage grow exponentially with the implementation of a recreational industry, and in addition to that, also a commercialization industry, which we can expect to spike that statistic even further. When future generations become teens, they will have grown up in a world where marijuana has always been legal. Their perception of marijuana usage risk will be much lower than ours is today. Having a retail marijuana dispensary would not only regularize marijuana use further, it would also contribute to the problem of underage drug usage and not benefit the family friendliness of our local neighborhoods. With that said, I offer you to consider two different policies. One would be to ban on retail marijuana dispensaries, and the other would be to place a moratorium on the establishment of retail marijuana dispensaries. If you decide at any point in the future that you would like to allow a retail marijuana dispensary, I do not believe it would be difficult, as of after January 1, 2022, up to 500 licenses will be available to open marijuana dispensaries in Illinois. However, if you were to make an impulsive decision now, today, and the results are as we expect them to be, destructive and devastating, it would be difficult to remove these dispensaries and the effects from your community. So we ask you not to make an impulsive decision and allow dispensaries to open their doors in 2020 and opt out of recreational marijuana sales. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go every other side.
Good evening. John Gilliam, Vernon Hills resident. Tonight, I speak as a resident of Vernon Hills, but perhaps more importantly, as the principal of Vernon Hills High School. This high school. As the only public high school in this village, my colleagues and I have a front row seat as witnesses to the effects of drugs and alcohol on our most prized possession, our youth. It's from this vantage point that I offer my professional opinion and strong recommendation to you tonight. Like most schools in our area, Vernon Hills High School has seen an increase in marijuana usage among its students. We believe there is a direct correlation between this usage and the nation's trend to legalize the drug. This uptick has significantly strained an already overwhelmed prevention and wellness program within this school. For those of us who work with young people, that's a scary thing, because we know two things to be true. Number one, marijuana has a detrimental impact on learners. Its negative effects on the brain's ability to think nimbly and clearly cannot be denied. And secondly, and perhaps even scarier, marijuana is a gateway drug. Students who use marijuana are significantly more likely to use and become addicted to more dangerous drugs. These facts cannot be denied, and while we cannot change the laws relative to its legality for adults of age, we can take steps to limit its access for our youth. I strongly believe that one way to do this is to keep its sales as far away from our community and our and our schools as possible. I implore you, as leaders of our community and parents of the kids in my school, I implore you to keep this drug far away from our children. Please opt out. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucasen, I'm, I'm Lucas, a junior from Stevenson High School, a resident of Vernon Hills, and a member of Catalyst Club. You might hear tonight that marijuana is better than alcohol and how the costs associated with alcohol are monumental. First, if you agree with this statement, adding another addictive industry to our town isn't the answer. And in fact, recent studies show that marijuana use is worse for kids than alcohol due to its impact on the teen brain. This is a different drug than it was in the 90s with a higher potency. It is far more danger, dangerous than it used to be. We don't have the data to support this harmless drug. Please protect our youth and our town. Opt out of recreational retail sales.
Hi, Scott Ellis, 1861 Sawgrass Mayor Trustee. Thank you for the opportunity. First, I want to say, in all fairness, Dr. Weiner, that wasn't a medical presentation that you gave. That was a personal presentation, and it wasn't fair and balanced. Quite frankly, I really don't understand why this is such a big deal, and why Vernon Hills or any other municipality would not allow the sale of a legal product. The reaction and comments that I've heard against the sale to me are comical. Some of the comments that I've heard include, "We don't want to ruin our image." What exactly is the image that we're trying to uphold? "We don't want drugs in our village." Banning the sale will not prevent marijuana use in Vernon Hills. It's use will be legal. Deal with it. We all know there are far worse drugs in our village and our high school. Let's do something about the real problems of heroin and opioids that are right here in Vernon Hills High School. We don't, we don't want the crime that this will bring. A recent article in the Boston Globe quotes a study published in the Regional Science and Urban Economics Journal based on crime in Denver that shows that crime actually decreased in the areas where marijuana dispensaries were opened. And this one to me isn't comical. We don't want the fill-in-the-blank that this will bring. I find this comment adherent on many levels. What exactly are you trying to imply? Also, I find the comments, comments of many people to be hypocritical. Reputable polls have shown that more than half of American adults have tried marijuana. So many of the people in this room making comments tonight have tried and/or used marijuana. Do they all turn into bad people? Absolutely not. In your day-to-day life, you probably either work with people who currently use medical marijuana, or use the services of a doctor, lawyer, accountant, or other professional that use the drug. I know extremely successful people in very diverse professions that occasionally partake in the legal use of marijuana. This is no different than the occasional beer or mixed drink that most of us partake in. The village certainly has no problem allowing the sales of other legal drugs. Cigarettes and vaping products are sold throughout the village, and currently, according to the Illinois Liquor Control Commission's website, the village has over 60 active liquor licenses. So once again, it's not an issue about drugs in this community. It's an issue about marijuana. I've seen way too many people of all ages go to bars and drink to excess, get in fights, drive home drunk, and commit other stupid acts. I've seen people get high, order pizza, and fall asleep. Why would you choose to allow over 60 establishments sell liquor and not allow the legal, regulated, and taxed sale of marijuana? The potential revenue from legal or recreational marijuana could be as high as $1 million for this village. These funds could be earmarked for such high priority expenditures as fighting the heroin and opioid addiction in our schools, providing funds to our schools to make up for the real estate taxes that they won't receive through the tip funds our village has and/or may approve.
That's your time, sir. That's your time. Whether you support. Whether you support. Whether you support the recreational.
Stop! Tell people not to interfere while people are speaking. Not to show.
This entire group was in Mungaline last night.
Not everyone is going to share the same opinion as the person speaking. These allow people their full time without interruption.
My name is Yachi, and I'm a student at Stevenson High School. I'm also a part of the Catalyst Club.
And a Vernon Hills resident. The products that the dispensaries are selling today are dangerous and are made to appeal to kids. As Dr. Weiner showed in the presentation, those products obviously have the names that are not appealing to adults and are more appealing to kids. And we've seen this more recently with e-cigarette companies and what they can do with our trendy, kid-friendly products. In just a few short years, they've hooked 25% of our teenagers, teenagers to nicotine. The marijuana industry will be no different. In fact, being sold in dispensaries right now are products called Brownie Scout vape, which has 75% THC. Bubblegum Vaporize, whose review is "sweet and fruity smell and taste, truly resembling bubblegum." Provides a euphoric high and has won four awards in the High Times Cannabis Cup. I'm pretty sure it didn't win this award for being the best medicine. Durbin Hayes 707 Headband Blue Dream, Alien Orange Candy, and 71% THC, Sunset Sherbert, 80% THC, DJ Flo, and more. How will this look when retail sales start? History has shown us what addictive for-profit industries do to reach kids and marijuana, and the marijuana industry will be no different. Please protect our community and opt out of retail marijuana sales.
All right. Dear President, dear trustees, and dear neighbors. David He, 210 White Fence Corp. I moved here five years ago from another town. I love Vernon Hills. I want to do my best to protect it. I love my neighborhood. I do not want any harm done to my neighborhood. Although it could be potential harm, but I don't want potential problem. This is a very challenging, complicated issue. I've been to other public debates and hearings. There are hard talk, you know, there are hard arguments all over the place. Just by smell test, it smells like a big problem to me. So I do not wish to introduce a big problem, even if say, just a chance of introducing the problem. We don't want that. And I sincerely ask our officers, you know, village officers, to opt out. I can speak from my personal experience. You know, I spent several years in Seattle as a poor graduate student. I was burnt out, stressed out. You know, in Seattle, you want to survive, handle your stress, you do things. You know what I mean? Beers and stuff, right? I almost got killed by marijuana. Stupid things I did back then. Marijuana by itself might be okay, but the problem is guys, young guys, active guys like me at parties, happy hours, they smoke and drink. We call that the compounding effect. You get high, you get boosted much faster, easily. The problem is the aftershock. You get stoned. Literally technically, remember when it happened to me? My heart was pounding inside me like crazy. I thought my heart was exploding. You know, I was sweating. I couldn't move at all. You know, I thought it's only me. It turned about, turned on my white guy, a buddy, a 200-pound white guy. Same thing happened to him, not just because I was a skinny Asian guy. So if you think it's okay, you're not doing enough, trust me. Try harder. Okay. Another case, you know, I almost got killed indirectly. You know, we had a happy hour. We had a designated driver. He did not drink, but he did other things. We pulled out into this busy main street. I remember seeing cars on the opposite side coming my way. Because he lost control, you know? And he ended up in, on the other side. We landed on the other curb on the highway. You know, it was at least four cars as far I could see. We shut down pretty much half the traffic in Seattle. Because there are only half of major highways in Seattle. So after these, I really regret it. I would never touch again, you know? I didn't need to quit. All right? That's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is Carson Isel. I am a junior at Stevenson High School, and I'm also a member of the Catalyst Club, which is a drug prevention group. Over the past couple of years, I have actually advocated against the commercialization of marijuana in the state of Illinois. But unfortunately, this past June, lawmakers moved forward with their decision to commercialize marijuana. But based on the facts that I gathered during my time advocating against that related to public safety, public health, and youth usage, I believe that the next best option for our communities is to opt out of recreational marijuana sales in Vernon Hills. And I want to focus a little bit on youth usage of marijuana, because that really pertains to me. In Colorado, in Denver County specifically, after they legalized marijuana, the, between 2014 and 2015, the number of marijuana-related offenses within 1,000 feet of schools more than quadrupled. And since then, it has not returned to pre-commercialization levels. And what this shows is Colorado has not been able to stop marijuana from affecting its schools, even though marijuana is not able to be sold to children. I see no reason to believe why in Illinois we will be able to prevent marijuana from impacting our schools. And this is not simply because marijuana is legal in Illinois. Having dispensaries plays a big role in the impact that marijuana will have specifically on schools in our community. This is because dispensaries have a goal, a publicly stated goal, of normalizing marijuana. You could find this on their websites. It is their goal to normalize marijuana. And they do this through their advertising online. They do this through the products that they sell that appeal to children. And they also do this by simply being in our communities, becoming a part of our day-to-day lives. I attended a conference this summer in Dallas, and I spoke with many kids from across the country that are in states where marijuana is legal. And they said that they have many friends who would never buy marijuana off the black market, but they would buy it or have a friend buy it for them, an older friend, from one of these dispensaries, because they believe that these products that come from dispensaries are safer. And the reality is that these products have higher THC levels, so they are more potent and less safe. But because of the dispensary's marketing campaigns and the kid friendliness of these products, they give off the impression that it is safer. And for this reason, I urge you to opt out of allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in Vernon Hills. Thank you.
Charles Lu, I'm living in Tegway Lane, a recent father of two, and I'm proud to call Vernon Hills my home for the past four years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak my opinion on this controversial issue. And I want to state unequivocally that I strongly oppose the legalization of recreational sale of marijuana here in Vernon Hills. I've talked to quite a few of my friends, and they are actually split on this issue. And one of the biggest things, the proponent of this measure says, "Look at all the tax benefits. Look at all the income that we can generate." I mean, do you want to, do you want to raise your taxes? I'm sure nobody here wants to raise their hands, volunteer to have the tax raised. You know, so this is actually very attractive, and it's, it's a win-win, because look at all the money, and we can pump it into school, infrastructure, roads, everything that you really want, right? Well, if you really think about it, there are other hidden costs associated with legalizing this drug. For example, you know, you know, I just became a father. So I'm already stressed out about thinking about, how am I going to educate my son when he's at the school at the age, tell him not to take drugs, to avoid peer pressure? Because I've been through that, and it was very stressful. But if, if this measure takes effect, and then drug, marijuana is available easily everywhere, that makes my job all the more difficult, all right? And some people could argue that, well, you know, kids are already using it, so if you make it legal, they probably won't use it as much. Well, if that's the case, well, shouldn't we be building to legalize other drugs like heroin and cocaine? I mean, that sounds ridiculous, right? But that's, the argument is like, well, if you legalize it, it's not, it's not so illegal, it's not so tantalizing anymore. Kids will, will be less likely to use it. I think that, that just doesn't, that doesn't make sense. Now, the other thing is, we talk about safety. Well, once you have a medical dispensary opening in the town, of course, there will be increased traffic, probably some from in, inside the town, some from outside the town. And then, of course, with increased traffic, there could be increased crime. And of course, we need police to, to enforce the law. And I'm sure, you know, that will cost more money, right? And the third thing is, overall, is, you know, you know, I moved here because I think Vernon Hills is a great place to raise a family. So what does that say? That, you know, once we legalize this, what does that, you know, what kind of image do we project? Now, some people have said like, well, that's kind of ridiculous. We all sell, sell alcohol. But, you know, at the end of the day, yes, money is tantalizing, but I feel like the cost is far always the benefit. And at the end of the day, we're trying to build a community to raise, to raise our family. And so, you know what, I'm not pro, I'm not anti-business. I want us to aggressively explore alternative revenue sources. But let's not do it in a way, let's not try to, you know, damage the core foundation of our community. So with that, I hope, you know, that you guys, everyone seriously consider the ramification, the long-term ramification of legalizing marijuana in recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alyssa, and I'm a senior at Stevenson High School. I'm here as a member of our Catalyst Club, which is a club that advocates for substance abuse prevention amongst all ages, but specifically youth. In this community, I'm advocating for Vernon Hills to opt out of having recreational marijuana dispensaries. For starters, a recent study from Oregon found that marijuana dispensary density was linked to a greater usage rates among 11th graders. With more dispensaries remaining prevalent in the area, the more accessible these products are to youth, and the easier access they will have to potentially possess recreational marijuana. As a community, the goal is to prevent youth from obtaining this access, so it is vital to make the process of making recreational marijuana available as difficult as possible. In terms of the financial aspects, although we don't know how much money we will make from a marijuana dispensary, we know that marijuana usage will likely increase local usage rates, which increases the amount of hospital visits, workplace absenteeism, and injuries. These are costs associated with a local dispensary. To reiterate, for the safety and security of our community, it's important that we opt out of having a recreational marijuana dispensary in Vernon Hills. Thank you.
My name is Yamin Huang, and a Vernon Hills resident. I'm speaking on behalf of my family. I have two children, one just graduated from Vernon Hills High School, one is graduating. And I'm convinced tonight by Dr. Weiner about his scientific evidence of the consequence of selling recreational marijuana in our community. And also, my son, my both children, they do worry very much about their friends and schoolmates in Vernon Hills High School, about their illegal, their exchange of, selling of marijuana. So I also confirmed by our chief, Chris, about his, his warning about be wise and watch out about, you know, to start a such legal sale, illegal, legal sale of marijuana in our community. So I do request our leaders in authority seriously consider to opt out marijuana sale in our community.
Hello, my name is Stella Michikova, and I am a junior from Stevenson High School. Today, we have sat here and we have listened to a lot of statistics from a lot of adults from different viewpoints. We have listened to the negative impacts that marijuana will have on our, on you, adults, but we haven't really focused on how it will impact us, the youth, and even future generations. Now, here's the thing. We have witnessed this before. Let's look at Jules vaping, any vape products accessible to our generation out there right now. Is vaping legal for minors under the age of 21? No, it is not. Does our youth vape? Yes, it does. Now, if we were to legalize marijuana, will we see an increase in, in smoking marijuana in our youth? Yes, we will. Is our youth already smoking when marijuana is already illegal? Yes, of course, it is logical that this amount of teenagers, or even just people under the age of 21, smoking will increase? Yes. Now, here's the thing. I would like to provide you a firsthand testimony of what I have witnessed in my high school. I have not seen anyone use opioids or heroin. Do people probably do this in my high school? Probably? Have I seen it happen? No. What have I seen? I have seen people drooling and vaping, and most definitely, smoking marijuana. We have heard how marijuana is a gateway drug. What does this mean? That the people who are smoking marijuana right now will probably move on to opioids and heroin in their adulthood? As adults right now, it is your responsibility to prevent this from happening. I was most disappointed when my state allowed marijuana to be legalized. I do not want to be disappointed by my village as well. Thank you.
My name is Liang Shi. I'm a resident of Vernon Hills. I see this in a very simple way. I don't see allowing the sale of marijuana is going to do any good to our community. At the same time, I don't see a need for our community. At the same time, I don't see a need for our community to have that. So in that case, why doing it, right? So I support opt-out, and I wish every one of you will support opt-out. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Epstein. I am a resident of Vernon Hills and have been for 19 years. I also run this catalyst group of amazing kids. I haven't talked yet, I haven't heard a lot of talk about the regulations that Chief Kreese kind of started to talk about. But our country right now, in our state, we're in the middle of a vaping crisis, with more than 500 cases of serious lung disease reported and nine deaths. The CDC expects this number to climb. But this isn't just about people vaping nicotine. In fact, the vast majority of the people with this lung illness report vaping THC. In fact, one of the deaths involved a person in Oregon going to a legal marijuana shop and buying the THC product there. Even the American Vaping Association's president issued a statement warning Americans to stop vaping THC oils to avoid hospitalization or death from the products. That guy's only job is to protect people who vape. So in a time when our governments need to step up and start protecting us by taking these products off of the shelves, we're here in Vernon Hills considering to making these products more available to Vernon Hills residents? The reason for this vaping crisis is the inadequacy of our government to regulate the vaping e-cigarette industry. The FDA is generally in charge of regulating food, alcohol, medicines, et cetera. However, they don't regulate vaping right now, and they don't regulate the marijuana industry. So it's up to the states. Massachusetts got this, I don't know if you saw today, but they banned temporarily all vaping products in the state, even THC ones. The problem is that states are not able to adequately regulate this market. In the beginning of this year, an audit conducted by the Oregon Secretary of State found that the recreational marijuana market has failed to stay up to date on mandated inspections. Its testing system continues to allow exposure to harmful contaminants, and regulators of the industry have done next to nothing to stop legal marijuana from fueling the black market. This report found that only 3% of Oregon's retail stores, 3%, and only a third of its growers, had been inspected for shortcomings like mold, metals, and bacteria. The state admitted Oregon's marijuana testing program cannot ensure that test results are reliable and products are safe. They failed to meet even basic standards, and this was three years after they issued their first license that this report came out. Do we think Illinois could do better? Sadly, by legalizing retail marijuana in Illinois, our lawmakers didn't do what it needed to do to protect its citizens. But you have the chance tonight to fix some of that, at least in Vernon Hills. And at least, if a Vernon Hills citizen goes to Mundaline dot, say, to buy THC, and something happens to that person, you know that you tried to do something to protect them. Today's current crisis of selling high potency industrialized marijuana is dangerous. This addiction-for-profit industry will keep trying to flood our communities with new dangerous drugs and ways to use them. You can do something to at least stop them in Vernon Hills before more lives are negatively impacted and possibly even lost. Thank you.
My name is Zhi Su, a resident of this town. Also, I'm an M.D., Ph.D. I think everyone tonight learned a lot of facts. Marijuana is bad to you. Will do more, way more harms than benefits, believe me or not. Why, you know, do you know why China was so underdeveloped before 1949? Because so many, many people were doing marijuana. Why China was, is growing so fast in the past 35 years? Because nobody does marijuana deal. If USA wants to be number one in economy in this world, we cannot do marijuana. I just add a few facts about marijuana. Marijuana cause will reduce, impair your judgment. Marijuana will cause hallucination. Marijuana will cause delusion. Marijuana will cause demotivation. If you lose motivation, you have no ambition to do anything great. So I'm strongly against recreational marijuana in this town. I strongly support opt-out. To save the future of this country, great country, to save the future of our next generation. Thank you very much.
My name is Pei Qing Law, and I have been living in Vernon Hills for over 19 years. My husband, Andrew, and I have five children. One already graduated from college and is a teacher in our school district. Another one is in college, graduating last year from Vernon Hills High School. And the other three are attending Hason School District, 73 and Vernon Hills High School. I'm so proud of our schools, and I want the best for our community. So today, our topic is about recreational marijuana, not medical. So for medical use, I strongly believe that we should use different channels to fill the gap, instead of by opening up recreational use. And I did lots of research before this meeting, tried to show some facts, but I think Dr. Weiner's PowerPoint gives us enough evidence. It's clear that the drawbacks of recreational marijuana definitely outweigh the benefits. And please opt-out. Thank you.
Hello? My name is Eric. I'm a resident in Port Clinton Division in Vernon Hills, more than two years. I'm here today to say no, N-O-no, to recreational marijuana. Today, if you go to Google, type in, "Does marijuana impact people's health?", the answer will vary. I agree with that, yes and no. You can see many answers. It all depends on what you choose to believe. Therefore, today, I want to share a little bit about what I believe. An answer of recreational marijuana has negative impact in people's health. This study is conducted by National Institute of Drug Abuse, a subsidiary of National Institute of Health. This is a U.S. government organization. Its mission is advocate advanced science in the causes and the consequences of drug abuse and addictions, and to apply the best knowledge to improve individual and public health. According to this study, I spent eight hours today to read through this study. Recreational marijuana carries short-term effect on over-activating part of the brain that contains the highest number of cells receptors that cause high feelings, like altered sense, altered sense of time, impaired body movement, difficulty on thinking, and problem-solving, impaired memory, hallucinations, and psychosis. When the people using marijuana, THC quickly pass through the lungs into the bloodstream, and the blood carries that chemicals to the brain and other organs throughout all your body. Also, it carries long-term effect, which we concern more. It affects brain development when people begin to use marijuana. The drug impact your thinking, memory, learning functions, and affect how the brain build up connections between the areas necessary to all those functionalities. Researchers are still studying how long marijuana effects last, and whether some change may be permanent. So this study is conducted by National Institute of Health, an organization under United States government. That is why I choose to believe, instead of so-called commercial advertisement saying this is nothing harmful to your health. In this, take this into consideration. That is why I want you to opt-out, O-U-T, out, for the legalizing the recreational marijuana. Hold on, I have another point. After our current governor saying that legalizing recreational marijuana will boost our tax -- okay, I have.
I am a Riverwoods resident, but I co-founded Pediatric Partners in Vernon Hills, and I've been a pediatrician for thousands of children in Vernon Hills for over 20 years. I'm here to advocate for the health of children and adolescents, since theirs is a voice that often goes unheard before village boards and policymakers. So my comments are specific to my expertise. What are the health consequences of youth marijuana use, particularly when they now go straight to vaping high-concentration THC? You've heard this many times, and it's true. These are not theoretical concerns that I'm talking about. These are real and have affected a number of my patients in just a very short time since vaping increased over the last couple of years, and access to marijuana increased through both diversion from our local medical dispensaries, as well as diversion from other states with recreational marijuana laws. So it's just one practice, one practice, my practice in Vernon Hills. We have seen vaping-related illness with severe lung disease. We've seen it in our practice. Chronic vomiting and abdominal pain. Severe vomiting, which you heard about, requiring days of hospitalization. Treatment, the only treatment that works is an IV antipsychotic medication, and it still can take days to work to stop the vomiting. We've seen motor vehicle accidents. We've seen the edible overdose and adverse drug reactions. We see poor school performance, high absenteeism, school suspensions, loss of motivation and interest in activities that once brought these teens joy as well as success. We see new onset psychosis. I've already seen that twice in my practice. I've seen suicide attempts and serious acts of violence against family members. We see worsening anxiety all the time, and unfortunately, sexual assault. And lastly, babies born with THC in their system. So comparing marijuana legalization to legal alcohol sales or offering it up as a solution to the opioid crisis is not relevant to the impact on youth in my mind. Keep in mind, states with the highest teen use rates all have recreational marijuana laws. Please don't be fooled or disregard teen rate, teen use rates that sound like small percentages. 6% to 7% of youth represents nearly 2 million teens in our country. So let me finish by saying, a multi-billion-dollar industry began telling my patients just a few years ago that vaping was safe, and in fact, safer than cigarette use. This is the message teens got. In a very short time, we have a public health crisis. We are seeing one in every four high school students vaping. We see that teens who vape nicotine are four times more likely to vape marijuana. And most recently, we see teens becoming severely ill, dying from vaping, and including THC that comes from legal dispensaries. So please, 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 opt-out and vote in favor of the health of my patients in Vernon Hills. Thank you.
My name is Yong Jun Zhang. I'm a Vernon Hills resident, a mother of three. I live in Vernon Hills because it is a great village to raise a family. And marijuana shop does not fit this image. Please opt-out. Thank you.
Dear mayor, and all the trustee of Vernon Hills Village, my name is Andrew Zhang. My wife just spoke, and our five lovely kids, pediatric, Dr. Sirota, just spoke. We've been living in Vernon Hills for 19 years. We moved from Deer Pass Division to Hason Club Division. We love Vernon Hills. And our kids, oh, they went to Vernon Hills grade schools, high schools. All these years, we enjoyed and appreciated the grade schools' safe communities, and we love and proud of this beautiful town. We all know that marijuana is a drug, is addictive, and it has negative impact on public health and safety. Here's an article written by Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police and Illinois Sheriff's Association. It shows the statistic data as follows. Since 2013, Colorado legalized recreational marijuana. Marijuana-related traffic deaths more than doubled during the same period. All traffic deaths increased 16%. In the first five areas that legalized recreational marijuana, Colorado, Washington, Oregon, Alaska, and DC, it's now the leading cause for drug treatment among youth. Marijuana-related hospitalization have increased 72% from the time of legalization. Property crime increased by 8.3%, and violent crime increased 18.6% since legalization. This data is alarming. My wife and I have grave concern about legalizing the recreational marijuana in this beautiful town, Vernon Hills. So dear elected officers of Vernon Hills, please opt-out. Thank you.
My name is Nina Liu. I'm the resident of city of Highland Park. I'm also a child adolescent psychiatrist, working at North Shore Medical Health System. I have worked as an inpatient at Highland Park Hospital. I also have my outpatient clinic at Deerfield location. This evening, I'm coming here to add a few cents about how the marijuana impact our young generation as a child psychiatrist. So for the past few years, with the legalization of medical marijuana use and also recreational marijuana use in some state, make people false believe that marijuana is a safe drug to use, especially for young generation. The statistics show in America, there is 115 million Americans using marijuana. Among these people, there are 40%, almost 50% of our children between age 12 to 20 years old. For the past several years, the trend of marijuana use has been progressively increased from middle school to high school. In eighth grade, there are 10% of the student using marijuana. At 10th grade, increased to 20%. By senior years, it increased to 35%. So how the medical, how the marijuana impact our young generation? How the marijuana impact developing the brain? So for the brain, you know, it's still developing until age 25 and even 30 years old. So there are four consequences. The first one is change the structure of our brain. So it's already been confirmed by imaging study. Secondly, it impair our children's functioning at the school. During so many year practice, I witnessed there are so many of our children, especially high school students, they used to be a A student. When they start using marijuana, they are not interested in school anymore. They are no motivation out doing their homework. Their schools suffer. They eventually drop off by high school. What they do in the community, they doing drugs. Some people even engage gun member in our community, involve the criminal behaviors. So another, the third consequence is causing the --
This time.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Marquez, and I have been a resident of Vernon Hills for 24 years. I raise my four kids here. I am also a school nurse in the local community. I have seen the stress that our children face every day. Constant social media, underage drinking, taking pills, vaping, getting stoned, and coming to school. They are some of the examples that our youth, very young youth, are facing today. Adding the ease of purchasing marijuana in our village will not help our youth. We should encourage our youth to get involved in activities that promote health. Sports, drama, band, working part-time, playing golf at our golf course. Sports, drama, band, working part-time, playing golf at our golf course, volunteering at community events such as our Fall Fest will only help our community and our youth. Please opt out.
Hello, my name is Xing Wei Liu, and I moved in Vernon Hills one year ago. And I'm father of two kids, one is six-year-old, one is four months. So I choose Vernon Hill for good reasons, for good schools, for nice community, for great, for great neighborhood, not just because marijuana. So, you know, the niche, just research ranked Vernon Hill High School at the top two and the school district among the US, not just Illinois. If you don't know what is image is that, that is the image. That's the image you deliver to the country, to the world. And again, people come to Vernon Hill for good reasons, not for marijuana. So some people may mix marijuana with alcohols. Let me remind you, alcohol still is not the same category as marijuana. Marijuana still remain as Schedule I drug, the same as heroin, same as SAD, LSD, if you can name it, right? Because people do research, when people, the marijuana take along, you increase 83% of car accident, the fatal accident. So think about that, we allowed selling alcohols here. If people buy alcohol and in, in, on same time buy marijuana, the rate was go, exposure up to 2,200%, 220,000%, which 22 times. So it's not just about having fun. It's just about putting other people's life at risk. So today, at Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, we know it's good school. We don't want to ruin it. We want to protect our image. So please, for ourself and for our community, for next generations, please opt out.
Hi, everyone. It's amazing we're here to discuss this important issue. I'm Sharon Shang Zhao. I'm a Vernon Hill resident for three years. Prior, I lived in Buffalo Grove for 17 years. So good to come to Vernon Hills. So I'm here to share a personal story. In the summer, I traveled to Canada. I went to a very beautiful town called Kingston. I think that's where the Queen's University is located. As a tourist, I wander on the street. I find out very beautiful stores, one on the main street at the corner. I look at, I'm interested, I'm intrigued. And, but I couldn't find a door. It's on the corner, neither side had a door. So because it's packaged so well, got the designer touch, so I made effort, went into the building, go around, found the building door, went in, and get into the store. Beautiful, like a museum setup, all the leaves. I thought it was essential oil museum or something. And after reading the labels, it was a cannabis store. People there dress nicely, make them feel, make me feel like upscale environment, maybe one of those lounge. Anyway, coming back from Canada, I heard in Chicago, there's a smoothie store. They can inject the cannabis shot. Well, I like smoothies. I wonder, when I go to Mariano, I like their smoothie, by the way. Mariano tells good smoothies, not marijuana, Mariano. And what if, if we pass this Mari-ano? They allow the shots in their smoothie, what would I do? So make me think how important the environment is, how important our community is. If these type of things scientifically proven damage our brain structure so bad for you can get dead, and at least it's your faster track to heroin, to cocaine, to the death, to get crazy. I mean, do you want that at your fingertips? Do you want to be able to walk or bike with your kids to the place? I hear all the laws, I hear all the prohibited clause. But we know with these type of thing, when there's a money behind it, there's a drive to get things under the table, to us, to our kids especially. If the law is not clearly specifically defined, then everything is up for interpretation. Isn't that right? So I can see in my mind that if we allowed this in the community, depression, okay, get this. Stress at the school, get it. Relationship issues, get it. I mean, anything can be solved by marijuana, right? Because it can cure cancer. Anyway, opt out, no question.
Hi, I'm Max Son, and I'm a junior at Stevenson High School and a resident of Vernon Hills. I strongly am against the legalization of recreational marijuana because it would increase the use of marijuana in teenagers. And that's a time when brain development is crucial to their life. Take the vaping crisis for example. In my firsthand experience, there's plenty of teenagers who are vaping in bathrooms. And this is due to the fact that there are easily accessible vaping stores, and these flavors are marketed towards these teenagers. And if recreational marijuana were legalized, these stores would pop up, and more flavors would be marketed toward teenagers. And there would be undoubtedly an increase in the number of teenagers using it. Would you want to add an additional marijuana crisis on top of a vaping crisis? Please opt out.
Dear Village President and Trustee, my name is Yuan Ga, Y U A N G A O. And I have been living in Vernon Hills for eight years, a mother of two. This is my first time to attend our town hall hearing during the past eight years. So I really want to take this opportunity to express my gratitude, that thank you for your dedication to this village and to make this village such a great place to live. During the past eight years, I sometimes, I sometimes wonder why I have the kids had the first place. I never regretted to live in Vernon Hills at all. I came here today to ask you to opt out the recreational marijuana. And I want to share my personal aspect of it. Eight years ago, I was expecting my first kid, kid, and I started house hunting with my husband at various places. We decided to settle at Vernon Hills because it is a very safe town and with the great school district. And the opt-in of marijuana will, will increase the significant risk of one, the unknown traffic. And as our legal counsel has pointed out, that there is no, even no standard DUI test for, for such kind of thing. So I think it's not really safe anymore. And most importantly, I think it increased the risk for the kids to get hold of marijuana. And when everybody talk about this things, I have two scenarios in my hand, in my mind. When I drop my kids to a playdate, the parents of uncle of my kids' playdates are lighting up the marijuana, marijuana. My kids will be curious about it and ask me, what are they? And I don't know if I'm ready to tell them. And there is another scenery. When my, when my kids are play at, at, at the backyard or bike with me on town line road, and, and they smell the drift of marijuana, and they ask me, what are they? I'm not sure I'm ready to answer them. So like many moms in my neighborhood, I saw many neighbors over there, and I'm terrified. And I do agree, some of the gentleman said earlier that they tried when they were teenager, and they turned out to be okay. Yes, the people tend out to be okay, and I could be here. But there are a lot more kids who are not okay, cannot even attend this event. And, oh my gosh, my cousin is an example. He used to be a strong soccer player with a sunshine smile when he was 18 years old. And now he's 40 years old without a stable job and live with his mom. People say that it take a whole village to raise a kid. As a village leader, I really have served this.
Good evening, my name is Wei Li. I'm a resident of Vernon Hill and a father of two. I come here tonight just to express my objection to the legalization of marijuana for recreational uses. So I urge you, please, opt out.
My name is Carol Kuno. I live at 462 Bay Tree Circle. I've lived in Vernon Hills for six years and Lincolnshire for 22. I've worked as a certified alcohol and drug counselor and a certified employee assistance professional for 18 years. I have done also, as part of my job as an EAP counselor, I've done specialized drug evaluations for Department of Transportation, safety-sensitive employees. These are people driving huge vehicles, transporting hundreds and thousands of people around. I am very strongly opposed to the sale of recreational marijuana in the village of Vernon Hills and in the state. But that, that's out of the bag. It's too late now for the state. Anytime there's an increased access to a drug, as the doctor pointed out, a certain percentage of users will abuse it, and another percentage of those will become addicted. That's just the facts. I have seen firsthand the terrible toll that marijuana, specifically marijuana addiction, has had on the addicts' physical and mental health, their family life, their financial and work life, including many job losses I have witnessed. These are people with pensions of 20 years that lose them. You can also bet that some of the marijuana will find its way into the hands of our village teenagers where it will permanently damage their still-developing brains, their thinking, judgment, memory, coordination, and definitely learning ability. Be aware that also some marijuana users will try to drive their vehicles on our local roads where their impairment, and there's significant impairment in driving, by the way, for this drug, will also cause accidents, possibly even deadly ones. Lastly, my comment. Isn't it enough that our nation already has a grisly heroin epidemic? I have no doubt that the more states that allow, and the more villages that allow the sale of recreational marijuana, the more likely it will become our next public health epidemic. And I say, repeat the word epidemic. So I say, let's vote out.
Hello, everyone, trustee members and village Vernon Hills residents here. A lot of people recognize me, I think. They know, they know me. I'm Hong Chen. I came from Buffalo Grove. I live in Buffalo Grove. I have practice in Buffalo Grove and benches in Vernon Hill location. So I'm primary care doctor working in North Shore University Health System. Dr. Nina Liu is my colleague. I'm so glad to meet pediatrician here and another psychiatrist here. You can tell my attitude here from my T-shirt, "Opt Out." I just shared my experience recently in the clinic, what I seen, what I learned, and what I try to reach out to every people, to my patient, address what I concern is, what my concern is. Recently, I have seen marijuana use disorder, cocaine abuse, all those drug issues randomly in my clinic here and there. But recently, I see a big number of people, especially young patients, age about 20s, they use vaping. Of course, vaping crisis in America is right now. There are several cases that bothers me. Every day, I can see two or three cases, two or three cases every day. It's not a small number. It's not like common cold. We see common cold in the flu season, but every day now, it's not a small number. And I have several cases being admitted to ICU. It's young, a young girl and boy, and it's been there for two weeks. Still stay there, get critical treatment there. Their lives is in a critical stage. And this is what I want to share first of thing. And second thing, I would like to really appreciate Dr. Weiner's presentation. And I would like to add in something that I think I can help people to understand why I opt out. For the addiction, I don't know why people always say that marijuana doesn't cause addiction, but it does. Chronic, long-term, heavy use can cause addiction. And acute withdrawal, it does have withdrawal symptoms, not without withdrawal symptoms. Withdrawal symptoms, basically, most of the withdrawal symptoms is psychosis. It's not like your body ache, nausea, vomiting, like cold symptoms. It's anxiety, depression, anger, suicide, schizophrenia. If you want your kids or your friends around you, your loved one to experience that, no, I don't think everyone want to see that happen to your loving one, right? And then the treatment, Dr. Weiner also show a slight of hyperemesis syndrome. People vomit it very badly. Nothing can be controlled because data shows routine medication to treat vomiting like Zofrin, Regulon, has no use. There's no use in the ER. Only, like pediatrician mentioned, several days of IV antipsychotics works. It kicking several days later. So it's really a suffering. Thank you. Opt out.
Mr. Mayor, village trustees, I'm Todd Renahan. I live on Deer Path Drive in Vernon Hills. Five years ago, I was at this school, and there was a speaker from ESPN's 30 for 30 documentary, Unguarded. He was talking about his addiction to drugs. Here we are today talking about allowing recreational sales of marijuana in our town. If approved, I guess it would give the college kids something to look forward to when they come home. I've lived here since December 95. I've seen a lot of good improvements in this village. If you allow the sale of pot in this town, that good road will end. If you're looking for sales tax revenue, where does the road end? Are there strip clubs next? Why don't we put them both at Melody Farms? Food, pot, strip clubs, all at Melody Farms in Vernon Hills. Our community is worth much more than 3% sales tax. Opt out.
Good evening, my name is Xiaowen Wang. I have been living in Vernon Hills for over 12 years. Raised my daughters here and I strongly against recreational marijuana. So I urge all of you to opt out. Thank you very much.
My name is Craig Warner, 30-year resident of Vernon Hills. I've come, and I've come here tonight to ask the village board not to allow the sale of recreational or medical marijuana. I do not know if any of you have lost a relative or a close friend to drugs. I have, and I cannot begin to tell you the pain and suffering endured by family members and friends who stand by and watch the use of these drugs take the lives of their loved ones. I lost my mother to drugs. She was a severe alcoholic, and back in the old days, they cured alcoholism with barbiturates, and that's what killed her, you know? I have relatives that have lost a child, another one who was arrested and has gone through court-ordered rehab and struggles every day with, with his addiction. I have a business acquaintance, and I'm a commercial airline pilot, you know, highly paid, highly compensated. We went to Europe, tried a little marijuana over there in Amsterdam, came back, got a no-notice drug test, lost his career, lost a million-dollar pension payout, lost his marriage, and lost custody of his kids, all over the use of marijuana. The suffering is just not on the user. The suffering extends to all who care for the victim, and thus, they all become victims of the drug culture. Friends of my daughter that went to Vernon Hills High School have died, or some still work to overcome their addictions. To those who are using drugs, marijuana and other drugs, you need help, and I'm all forgiving it. To those that sell it, I'll withhold my comments. Vernon Hills is hopefully a safe haven where young families have a chance to raise their children in safety. We've invested heavily in our schools, parks, churches, and civic organizations to improve the quality of life in Vernon Hills. We're not totally free of society's problems, but we do have a village that can help families successfully raise their children. Marijuana use and its retail sale is directly opposed to these goals. Legalizing it, and I will point out it's federally still outlawed, sends a loud and clear message to our children that there is no danger associated with the use of this drug or other drugs. That deadly message would be bolstered by the fact that kids would see these retail shops every day in their town. It will tell you marijuana and its participation in the drug culture poses dangers, not only to the children, but anyone who uses it. Why would Vernon Hills want to, want to bring these problems and these people who use it to Vernon Hills? I ask for the sake of current and future generations of our community not to allow the sale of marijuana in Vernon Hills. And I do want to thank you for allowing all of us to express our opinions tonight. And I hope that you will not allow the sale of marijuana in Vernon Hills. Thank you.
Dear Village President and trustees, my name is Benjamin He, and I'm a Vernon Hill resident. I'm strongly against recreational marijuana sale in Vernon Hills. Well, first of all, please distinguish recreational marijuana sale from medical marijuana usage. If a person is ill and need medical marijuana to relieve the pain, I truly, truly emphasize with you, and I wish you well. But please get the medical marijuana from the doctor, not over the counter from corner store. You know, my daughter had a cold, and she took antibiotic. It only cost $1.49 in Walmart. I need a prescription for that. I need a prescription for that. And if you really take your illness seriously, you buy a drug, a medicine, from your doctor, not from some guy in the corner store or even on the street. And second, well, even marijuana has its medicinal use. It's still harmful substance to the general public, especially to our children. Well, otherwise, we won't restrict it to adults over twenty-one, right? And it's just plain and simple. Less access, less use. Let's summarize it all. So decades ago, and tobacco industry has been denying that cigarettes are addictive. Then it's the e-cigarette industry telling us vaping is safe. Well, just these couple of weeks, watch the news. And now it's the cannabis industry's turn on us. This time, we will not be fooled. So I'm a, well, actually, I'm a first-time homeowner ten years ago, and I chose Vernon Hill to be my home. And image matters. As an honorable person and a leader of society, character matters too, right? Character matters too. So please make a decision, and a wise decision, and opt out. Thank you.
My name is De Liang. I'm living in Vernon Hills with my wife and my two kids. I have a PhD degree in chemical engineering. I'm working for a chemical company, so I must know chemicals. Marijuana is a bad chemical. It contains highly addictive chemicals. You know, there are some good chemicals and some bad chemicals. Marijuana is bad. If you use it, you cannot quit it easily. So if you try it, it will cause your memory loss. If you are a kid, it will reduce your learning capability. If you are adults, it will reduce your working capability. So we must be very careful on marijuana and don't use it at all. So my best suggestion is to stay away from marijuana as far as possible, as far as we can. Please don't bring marijuana into Vernon Hills. Please opt out. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Shang Lin. I moved to Vernon Hills four years ago. My kids actually used to attend mandarin schools. Mandarin made a wrong decision last night. That's why I had to be here to express my concern. I do not want my elected officials to say yes to sales of the drug. I don't want my town to be known for the drug. So please opt out. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Katie Salton. I live at 304 Huron in Vernon Hills. I lived in Vernon Hills for ten years, moved to Colorado for two years, and came back to Vernon Hills two years ago. So hopefully, I have a little bit of perspective. I'm not here to urge you either way. I'm here to ask you to make a decision based on arguments for both sides. Look at pros and cons based on facts from nonpartisan resources. What I've heard tonight is a lot of rhetoric from nonresidents. I've heard statistics and data shown from potentially partisan resources and not current ones either. I've heard a resident speak that was booed and disrespected, which I don't think gives a fair and accurate depiction of both sides of the argument. I think it actually has deterred people potentially from speaking tonight with how the reaction happened earlier. So I want you to do your research and do your due diligence. In Colorado, I saw successful operations at the dispensaries. I saw security agents at the front doors that actually act as a deterrent to crime in those areas. I saw revenue used towards education at the schools, fact-based drug education that teaches children right from wrong, teaches them the facts about all sorts of drugs, which I haven't even seen that type of education in regards to alcohol and tobacco use. So I want to also mention that I think the stories we've heard tonight of death, of careers lost, that can be applied to alcohol and tobacco use as well. But people are given the choice right now to use that because that's legal here, and we sell it in Vernon Hills. So I want to urge you to look at the facts. Fact, Illinois already legalized marijuana use. We can't take that back. Fact, Mundeline approved recreational dispensaries last night. Another fact, you'll probably have residents crossing city lines and going into Mundeline and purchasing and giving them the revenue, which now they stand to earn between $200,000 and $400,000 annually at minimum by making it accessible in Mundeline. So again, please look at both pros and cons. I don't envy your position, but I hope that you can look at it from both perspectives and do your research. Thank you.
Dear village trustees, my name is Yumei Wang. I've been a Vernon Hill resident for five years. So first, I want to point out two points that that lady just mentioned. So first, she said majority of nonresidents. That's so not true. Most of speakers I remember are Vernon Hill residents. So we have the right to speak here. Second fact. Second fact, very important. The gentleman was booed, not because his content, because he was out of his time limit and did not stop. Is that right? So we are respecting people here, and we are legally expressing our opinions. So, sorry, I'm very excited. So first of all, I think recreational use is a very false term. Using marijuana is not recreational. Getting high is not recreation, just like Dr. Weiner said in his presentation. Some, like gentleman just mentioned that, what harm is it to have some, to, for you to get occasionally high? I want to argue against that by where do you draw the line? There are so many alcoholics, so many additives, so many people who are addicted to things. They all start from somewhere. They all start from occasion doing something. But where do you draw the line? We as adults, it's hard for us to resist temptations like sugar, junk food. How can we expect our children to be able to resist temptations? We cannot eliminate the sources. Like unfortunately, Illinois has legalized marijuana. But for us, getting limited, getting them to limit to the access to the temptation is the least we can do. So just as Dr. Weiner said in his presentation, there are more access means more usage. And least amount of access is the least we can do for our children. We all want our best for our families and for our kids. So ask yourself, are you going to use marijuana? Or are you allow your kids to use marijuana? If no, then please opt out. Thank you.
Dear Honorable Presidents, Trustees, or the Board, thank you very much for your service to this community. I'm Guangsheng Gu. I just moved in Vernon Hills from Mundeline. Yesterday, we... Yes, somebody said, "Zheyi was in Mundeline." Yes, I was in. I was very disappointed by the decision yesterday, this night. Today, I'm not going to talk about too many things, but I just want to speak about truth, the whole picture. There are some lies and some truths about marijuana. Not Marianna, okay, right? Okay. So firstly, the lie one. Marijuana has no physical harm. This is not the truth. The truth is, it's harmful to physical health. From FDA and from CDC, the report says, consumers are urged to avoid buying vaping products on the street and to refrain from using THC products and so on. Additionally, no use should be using any vaping product, regardless of the substance. This is from FDA. Then from CDC, it said, smoked marijuana in any form can harm lung tissues and cause scarring and damage to blood vessels. And this kind of damage could be a long time or even be permanent. These are truths. Secondly, somebody says, "Try it. It's easy to refuse in the future." The problem is that, the truth is that, the addiction. CDC report said, "At least ten percent would be addictive for use. This rate would be at least seventeen percent." So, and also, the third lie is about, it brings happiness, no mental harm. This is totally wrong. It's harmful to mental health. Marijuana can directly affect the brain. This is from CDC report. Specifically, the parts of the brain responsible for memory, learning, attention, decision-making, coordination, emotions, and reaction time could be severely affected. And also, it will increase the rate of driving while intoxication. Intoxication, yeah. So the fourth lie is about, it brings tax. It can promote the economy. This is totally a lie. The truth is, there is no positive economic value from marijuana. So everybody knows when you're building a house, you must build your house on solid foundation. You cannot build your house on sand dunes, right? The same for economic growth. Marijuana will make more people addictive to drugs. Addus very hard to work correctly. Kids are very hard to study. Yeah, okay. So it destroys human resources. How can this help us in economy? So my final question is that, if you are parents, you are grandparents, you have kids, think about it, a few years later, if your kids or grandkids are in ICU due to marijuana or hit by other people due to driving intoxication. So how would you think about it? Please opt out.
Hi, my name's Eric Chua, and I'm actually North Brookside. I'm from out of Vernon Hills. I'm very proud of this group of people because they're very passionate about their town. My village has opted in, I think. So I really believe that it's important for me to speak tonight. I was raised in the Chicago area, and growing up here, I was very aware of all the high schools around the Chicagoland area that had drug issues. And when I moved up here seven years ago, I selected my area because I felt that it was, didn't have a lot of drug issues. Now that marijuana is coming in, and I'm rethinking where I live now, and maybe I want to move to Vernon Hills because so many people feel that way. But I just want to say that I think the image, obviously, is very important. And I got asked, where does it stop? If someone has previously said, you know, first, now we have marijuana, how about casinos? Or, you know, how about maybe strip clubs or whatnot? So I want everyone to think about, can we stop this flow of illicit type of recreation? Medical marijuana is one thing, but recreational is something different. So I really implore you to opt out. And I think that will actually drive people to want to live in these areas because they see a group of people that really care about families and also, trustees that also care too about what the people want. So I want to thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Juan. Thank you for this opportunity. And as others have pointed out in this discussion, it's been very one-sided. I feel like it's been biased as well. I've lived here my whole life. I'm actually twenty-three years old. I graduated from here, actually. Just recently graduated from college as well. And it's up to interpretation if I've smoked marijuana or not, but I am in favor of having it legal here in Vernon Hills, mainly because, you know, there have been a lot of comparisons to alcohol, like in this discussion in particular. And one discussion, or one particular topic that we haven't discussed is the amount of deaths that alcohol has caused compared to marijuana, which is around eighty-eight thousand a year just for alcohol poisoning, I believe. That doesn't include DUIs or anything like that. And if it's, if we're talking overdoses on marijuana, the number for that is zero for deaths. In terms of marijuana, you would have to smoke around 2,100 joints in around fifteen minutes to overdose. But on top of that, in regards to regulation, I believe that is the best way in terms of like, in terms of keeping it out of children as a lot of people seem to have that concern. By not doing anything about it and just like leaving it how it is now, it's only going to continue to be on the black market rather than using that revenue, as someone had mentioned earlier on the stage, that it could be used towards other funds like police enforcement or other sorts of, you know, public services that may be available here in Vernon Hills. In addition to that, there are numerous studies of the benefits that the revenue could be used for, such as like in Colorado, they use it for, you know, you know, people who have been disadvantaged due to incarcerations, for marijuana, for education purposes, for things like that, criminal justice services. So I really do think that it should be legalized for those purposes because by not doing anything about it, the black market for it is only going to, is going to continue to exist. And as we know, it's going to be legal in Illinois regardless if we decide to sell it or not. The clinic, which is the dispensary right in Mundeline, is like right next to Vernon Hills. So it's really not that much of a difference in terms of that. And I would be really interested to see how, what kinds of security implementations that Mundeline would use. But we do have precedents for it in other states, so I would say that we need to look to those in order to do it the best way possible since we are the only state to have legalized it through law. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Hongbo David Chen. I lived in Georgetown in Vernon Hills for like sixteen years. And usually, this is sort of a first time I do a real public speaking, okay? Because it's a, it's a, I'm always kind of shy and stay back and because public speaking is kind of number-one fear, okay? So, but right now, you can see, I say no to recreational marijuana in Vernon Hill, okay? And the timestamp doesn't matter. I would say no to that even next year, the year after, okay? And I, because we all know marijuana is a gateway drug, okay? It's less evil, but still evil. Drug is drug, okay? You open the gateway, where do you stop, okay? And I really disagree with a lot of decisions made in state level, even in federal level, okay? I cannot do anything with those, maybe too little, too late, but I disagree. But what we can do, and what I can do, is voice my concern, voice my opinion and in village and where we still consider our community, okay, our home, okay? And the revenue is not worth the social cost to the community long-term, okay? If you're looking for one month, two months, maybe, okay? I mean, there are a lot of PhD, there's a lot of doctor, they all have those kind of papers, big numbers, okay? Make me kind of scared because I don't have all those kinds of things, okay? I'm using common sense with my small brain and trying to say no to marijuana here. And we just cannot do it because it's less evil. It's still evil, okay? And we need to hold the line and tell our kids, say, "Don't start it, okay?" As a kid, you don't start with something less evil. And as a community, you don't support those kinds of things that are less evil. And I know it's a lot of a commercial drive behind that one. It's all about money. But long term, when this community is broken, okay? And those big money gonna leave, okay? Who gonna hold the bag that time, right? So for that, I really trust the trustees, and let's vote no.
Hi, Corey Groupie. I live at 309 Alexandria Drive. I've lived in town for 18 years. You know, the doctor actually spoke about the names of marijuana, names like Zombie Dust, Undead Party Crasher, Tactical Nuclear Penguin, you know? Unfortunately, those are all craft beers. It's just a name. You know, January 1st, 2020, recreational cannabis will be the law in Illinois. It's legal. And tonight, we came in hoping to have a productive discussion. However, that's really not what happened. Productive arguments need experts from both sides. That is not what the town provided tonight. I've heard hearsay, and I've heard this person did this, this person did that, this person knows this person, this person knows that person, but I don't have anything in fact. The doctor produced an op-ed, which I can pick apart with actual current facts. You know, kids won't have access to legal cannabis. They'll have access to black market cannabis. You will not be able to get in the front door at any recreational cannabis location. It's not going to happen. Security is way too much. Now, we also want to talk about, you know, the group that was here tonight. We know they were all in Mundaline last night. They've been going to various towns, voicing their opinion, which they are more than entitled to, and I understand. That's fine. But there's also something called the silent majority. You know, one of the things that other towns in the area are doing is they're actually using an anonymous text system for people to send in their opinions via attached text anonymously. Some people can't make the meeting, some people are intimidated by the sheer number of people here that don't want to speak in front of them. Some people don't want their neighbors to know that they smoke cannabis. So we should actually afford that to them like some other towns in the area have done. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yuan Gao. I've been living in this town for 20 years. I raised two kids. Well, my husband and I raised two kids, and they both graduated from this high school. So we are very proud being here. I've heard a lot of people talking about how good, how bad, all of that. I'm not going to touch on that. I just want to point out that there's one human nature, which is human-like convenience. So if I am an opera fan, for example, I have to go to Littler Opera every so often. It takes more than one hour to drive, and it's tiring. I probably only gonna go like three or four times, you know, a year. But if there's an opera house here, I probably go every other week. So what I'm trying to say is that getting on the market marijuana and have to smoke, you know, not let other people to see, it's one thing. And openly to buy it every so often, and it's another. If we open a store, whatever, in Vernon Hills and selling recreational marijuana, and then soon enough, that store will become just like another bubble tea place that they hang out. And I think that will increase the chance tremendously for the people who would get harmful effect from the marijuana. So if, for those people, like, who are already very crazy about marijuana, no matter what, they're gonna get it. But for a lot of kids, maybe they're like, oh, I want to try, it's, you know, maybe it's cool, but, oh, it takes so much effort. I'm just gonna give up. But when there is something available at their door, and they're gonna try, and more people are gonna try, and a bigger penetration of our teenagers gonna become a consumer of marijuana. So I want you to think about that. That's, it's something that you cannot ignore. Another thing is marijuana, of course, it's something you can eat, you can smoke, whatever, but it's not a piece of meat or vegetable. So that's kind of like a drug, right? So when you take a drug, they will bother or tell you, in case of adverse incidences, you have to call this, this, this line. What are our, you know, guidelines for that? What if my, and what if my 20-year-old son, I don't have a son, just hypothetically, 20-year-old son go drive to the store and taking my nine-year-old daughter with him? Is she gonna, you know, exposed to that? So those are the questions I want you guys to think about, and I want to express my concerns that I definitely want to opt out. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Li Ning Xu, and thank you for allowing, giving me an opportunity to speak here. I'm a mom of four and stayed, moved to Vernon Hills 10 years ago. All my kids go to the house on 70th Street School District. There's, previously, gentleman said, because there are regulations and make sure the, sorry, recreational marijuana won't get into the hands of the kids. Well, I don't think so. As we all know, as same thing happened with the cigarette and alcohol, that's why we heavily educate our kids in high school and even from elementary school level, saying, stay from there, stay from those drugs. And that's why this, we want to stop the kids using them and get to the, they can't get to the channel. And either from their cool friends or from their not very careful parents. And you don't want, I don't want that happen to my kids. I don't want, and there is also peer pressure. As my colleague, one of my colleagues said to me, when he grow up, his family, his parents went to divorce, so his teenager brother picked up some marijuanas as 20 years ago. It's not as nearly as strong as today's marijuana. The THC level is probably only 5% compared to our current standard, like 30%. But his brother got hooked up on it, and he tried, and it doesn't do anything to him. It's just like his brother bring him some, and he tried again, and doesn't do anything. So later on, his brother got addicted to the marijuana and then drop off the school and got kicked out from the house. Eventually, his family cannot stand this kid anymore. His teenager, and I think by the legal age, he's already out to another, moved out to a friend's home. And from there, the, all the lives takes different paths. My colleague went to college, then got his PhD, and got family, and settled down. But his brother till today still live with his parents. It's a sad story, but we all know this things happen. NIH said there's 90% of marijuana user will develop addiction to it. And if my kids grow up in that environment, 9%, I mean, 9% children will have addiction to the marijuanas, then that's 9% of the problem we have to deal with as the community. And is this 3% tax really worth the risk of our 9% future? That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chen Nego. I lived in Vernon Hills for 18 months. I was just reading an article entitled Colorado's Anticipated Marijuana Reports Details Use Usage, Driving, and Crime Over Last Five Years, which was published last October. What strikes me most is the report finds that the number one cause of kids being kicked out of school is due to drug use. Some other alarming findings are organized crime cases almost tripled in the last five years. Rates of hospitalization with possible marijuana usage increased steadily over the past 15 years. So my question to the council member is, has the village conducted a cost-benefit analysis, specifically the cost associated with potential, like, traffic accidents, cost associated with substance abuse, and most importantly, the potential impact to our minors? Do we really want to mortgage our kids' future in exchange for 240 grand tax money? Also, we have actually half a year of winter. Do we really want to make our driving more stressful? Some people just mentioned drunk driving kills. I found this is comical, as two rounds don't make it right. So I implore you, all of you, to opt out.
Good evening, dear trustees, and hello, everyone. My name is Ting Xia. I'm a resident of Vernon Hills. I have been living and working in this community for more than seven years. The reason for my family to choose this village is that we did a lot of research before we moved. We found that Vernon Hills has a very good school district, and it ranks number 19 out of 636 for the best place to raise a family in Illinois. Many young families and talents move to Vernon Hills because of its healthy and family-oriented, family-supportive environment. However, if we opt in for recreational marijuana stores, it would discourage many families and young talents. The potential legalization of recreational marijuana in Vernon Hills may also encourage the youth, including the teenagers, to get in touch with this dangerous stuff. This may put our community's innovation and prosperity in the long term. How can we imagine such a kid-friendly, family-supportive community becomes a drug-addiction, high-crime-rate community? I have been in biomedical research field for more than 20 years. I got my PhD in University of Washington, and my major is biomedical engineering. I know exactly how marijuana does harm to our health. It has both short and long-term effects on the brain. It affects our brain development, and it's over time, and sometimes it's permanent. For example, a study recently from New Zealand, in, conducted in part by the researchers in Duke University, they show that people who started the smoking marijuana heavily in their teenage ages had an outgoing marijuana use disorder, lost an average of eight IQ points between ages 13 to 38. The lost mental abilities didn't fully return in those who quit marijuana as adults. The amount of THC in marijuana has been increasing steadily over the past few decades. For a person who is new to marijuana use, this may mean exposure to higher THC levels with a greater chance of a harmful reaction. As for tax revenue, I would argue that any tax revenue generated by legalization will be outweighed by its social cost, which are several times greater than its benefits. So it is found that in Colorado, for every $1 of tax revenue generated by the marijuana taxes, people paid $4.5 to mitigate its social costs stemming from the healthcare and education system and other things. So my last question, my last thing is that opt out. Thank you.
Good evening. Dear Village Board Trustees, I'm Jing Ma. I live in the borderline of Vernon Hill and Buffalo Grove, and I'm a registered voter, and I have a kids, and I very active involved various community volunteers work to support our kids and teachers for better learning environment. I do see how vulnerable our kids are in today's world with conflicting and confusing message. Now, let's talk about the facts. The boy just now, I want to tell you, do you know what is CHS? This is an article I read, published by Idianna Police Star reporter Sherry on September 20, 2019. A teenager named Brian Smith Jr. died at age 17 last October due to smoking weed. Five months later, her mom, Dani, poked over a coronary report for answers. She finally accepted that the marijuana played a pivotal role in her son's death. The autopsy report, which Dani received in March, attributed her son's death to dehydration due to cannibaloid hyperrhetics syndrome, which is called CHS, which was developed from smoking marijuana. Thinking back, Dani, the son's mom said, I thought, okay, at the time, if that's all he's doing, smoking marijuana, pick and choose your battles, she said. If this is the worst thing he's doing, I'm okay. He's not in any trouble legally. He's not playing with guns, robbing people, and stealing things. He's supporting his own habit. I thought, oh, that is what it is. But he had no reason, and Dani had no reason to be concerned about CHS because, like many of us, we have never even heard of it. A study published last year in the journal Basic and Clinical Pharmacology and Toxicology Survey, urban emergency room patients who smoked marijuana 20 or more days a month, of the 155 who said yes, almost a third of them experienced CHS symptoms. Emergency room doctors, they sit on the front lines that we know this is a totally underdiagnosed entity. So talk about the fact. That's the fact. So, so as a mom, and also, by the way, I live in Buffalo Grove, Buffalo Grove, October 21st, we have hearing. If Buffalo Grove voted opt in, I will move to Vernon Hill. I'm, that's, it's a big deal. It's a big deal for parents because I see how kids, they are so vulnerable today. And so, dear Village Board Trustees, please be cautious in voting this issue because I'm standing here not only for my daughter, for all the kids.
So, okay. Good evening. I don't live in Vernon Hills, I live in Long Grove, and I am a senior in Stevenson High School. I mean, I just decided to speak out like five minutes ago, so I'm so nervous right now. I just want to take a deep breath, sorry. Okay, so because I didn't prepare for this, so I would like to talk about my own experience. Two years ago, I moved to America as a first immigrant. I didn't speak English at all at the time, so I didn't understand what other people were talking about. But I do remember the, at the end of the first term of the first semester, I was calling my mom at the night because I was after like a unit test, sometimes, stuff like that. And like, there were some students, they were around me, and they just like, I think they were recording because I saw the flash, flashlight, and they just gave me like, I forgot, they said like white powder stuff, like, they asked me, do you want drug, do you want marijuana? Yeah, that's how to pronounce it. So, because I didn't know what that is, but I do know they didn't look like a, like, good person, like, good guys, so I refused to receive it. But they were around me and laughing, they were laughing at me, laughing at me. So I was scared because I think I was being threatened by other people. But I didn't, I couldn't refuse them, I couldn't run out from them because I didn't speak English at all. And fortunately, they just left me there after they like laughed enough, so they left. I ran away from them, I called my mom, I cried because I was scared by them. Those students are from Stevenson High School because I didn't know how to react them, so I didn't report it. I don't even know who they are. So from that, I just really, really, I mean, I was scared to like talk to other people and like, I don't really want to handle other people because I think maybe some people, they're really bad, they're not good, they're not like friendly. But like, that's why, it's another reason I got depression from it, like, it's because I was being threatened by other people. This is my only experience, it just influenced me a lot. I refused drug, and I refused marijuana. Yeah, so this is my reason, just because I don't like it. And by the way, I want to say something to some people, they want to, want the marijuana to be legalized. I do respect your idea because I know people are different, and people, they have their different opinions, but I still hope you guys can also respect us. Don't judge all our accent, don't judge all our grammar because this is our second language. We're trying our best to speak out. Thank you.
Good evening. You know, I just want to commend everyone on both sides of the aisle here on how brave everyone's been coming down here to speak. I can pretty much tell, a lot of people have never spoken in a public forum like this before. So to get up here, to give their passion, to give their feelings out to the Board of Trustees, I want to give them a hand for that because that's very important, that we have a community that allows us to do that. Unfortunately, this, this topic is not on the ballot. It's not something that we can vote for. It's not something that we can say yes or no to. In a way, we have because we've chosen our, we've elected our elected officials. So it's on you guys and Ms. Brown. I'm sure you guys can call and vote at any time on this topic. But facts have been, perceived facts are being said tonight, and at the end of the day, I don't know if his facts are true or his facts are true or not. One of the things that do stick out to me on this topic are the kids. You know, I think, if you know me, I'm all for the children in the schools in this town. The principal of Vernon Hills, I listened to that. The chief police, who's been out there, I listened to that. I think there's, many of you guys have experience in the schools and have seen it. Everyone who has children in this town know how hard it is raising children are, from infant all the way through to college and even after. I don't think we need to give them one more thing for us to worry about to help raise them. We're in a funky predicament now because Mundaline passed it last night. So, hey, it's legal in the state. What are you gonna do? It's legal in Mundaline. I drive 15 miles to go get the kind of deep-dish pizza I like, okay? And I'll do it over and over because it's not coming to Vernon Hills. If somebody really needs something that's valuable to them, you know, yeah, Vernon Hills will lose the revenue, but last time I checked, we're actually doing pretty good with our revenue right now. So is it something that we can, you know, hold off and take a look and see approach? In the meantime, if somebody really, if something that they value and need, you know, Mundaline is down the street, and yeah, I have to tell you, I think they do, they can help use the revenue too. So it's a gut check for you guys. It truly is. You know, you're gonna look down, you're gonna see what vision you've always had for your community that you lived in, that you're an elected official on, and that's why you guys are up there. I don't envy you, you know, but I support whatever you guys come up with because I've seen you guys in the last couple of years working hard to improve our community. And to be honest with you, I think this is the strongest it's been that I've seen in the last 16 years I've lived here. I live in Centennial Crossing. I've been there, you know, for the last 16 years, and I've seen a lot of turmoil early on. And I've really seen it improve over the last couple of years between the community, the communication with the village, the schools, and the park district. And that's what makes a community. Thank you.
Thank you for standing late to listen to us and thank you for everybody coming out. My name is Lisa and I am a Vernon Hills resident and I am a mother of three. Two of my kids graduated from Vernon Hills High School and I have another one just entered here. I moved to Vernon Hills in 2003 from Chicago. I grew up in Chicago. I went to high school in Chicago. I come here because I'm near this town. Me and my husband driving around, around the city, around the suburb, we choose Vernon Hills because this town's reputation and sheer sense of community. I'm speaking to you today because I believe, I strongly believe, a recreational marijuana store will be hurt our community and our town's reputation. If you want to know what is our town's reputation, please contact me. I'll tell you in detail. I am a full-time worker. I worked for a health insurance company for 20 years. I know how is the health insurance cost dry up, throw up 200%. You and me know why. I'm not going to talk about that today. In the weekend time, me and my husband, we form a Chinese school, weekend school. We started in Lake Forest and we're right now in Deerfield area. We serve over 300 families every year. So, I'm served as a principal for our Chinese school. For the past 15 years, I have been working with children from kindergarten to high school. A lot of familiar faces here. A lot of people that I just met today. Those students and their families are the upcoming targets of this recreational marijuana markets. We all know. We're not going to talk about things today and we heard a lot of story about it. I feel it is my duty to the community, to protect my children, my students. If a marijuana store is approved, it puts a vulnerable student and their family at risk. This gives underage students exposure to and potentially easy access to marijuana. I agree to what doctor says. Less access, less damage. With a store marijuana distribution and potential for underage sales will be over booming. You guys all know that. I'm not going to talk about that. If opt-in, this will reinforce the message that marijuana usage is acceptable. I strongly say opt-out. Please give me one second.
Julie Simpson, 21 Monterey, did I turn it off? 21 Monterey Drive, Vernon Hills. Okay. You know, I heard a lot of different facts today and I'm not sure really what's facts and what's not facts. I know I can go on the internet and find things that'll tell me that vaccinations are going to give my child autism. And we're talking about a lot of extremes and different things going on. And I don't know what's true and what's not true. And I'm looking at this a little bit of a different way. I will not be partaking whether there's a dispensary in here and Mundaline and anywhere else. I don't do it now and I don't plan on doing it then. And so, I'm looking at it where we're going to have a dispensary within a mile and a half of where my house currently is. I actually think it falls into the Hawthorne 73 school boundaries where the location is. And so, my question is with the, you know, the only thing I heard, the chief, when he put up the billboard of, you know, getting high in Vernon Hills or wherever it was, that I don't see having a Mundaline dispensary is, you know, by not having one in Vernon Hills, we won't have that sign, right? But anything else, the exposure to our children, the ease in the access of getting it, I don't know if any of those things are going to change. The concern about impaired driving, if we have a dispensary in Vernon Hills, is it going to be any more of a threat than it is having one mile and a half away in Mundaline? And so, I look at it as to, you know, you guys are just going to have to weigh the pros and the cons and decide whether losing that revenue to a neighboring village is really going to have an impact on what we see go on in our village. And, you know, like I said, I don't really have a big stake in it either way because I'm not partaking. So, I just look at it a little different and, you know, I hope that all the different scenarios are going through everybody's head. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yi Yang. I lived in Lincolnshire, but I go to Vernon Hills every week to do shopping, to go to restaurants. So, I've been contributing a lot of tax revenue to Vernon Hills.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also a toxicologist that training. I studied as a toxicologist profession and from graduate school. And also, I work as a toxicologist in pharmaceutical company. My job is to understand the mechanism toxicity and also hopefully we can develop better medicine without side effects so people can benefit all the good way of those drugs, the medicines, and not suffering from the side effect. So, I think a lot of, I have heard a lot of things about marijuana, what the effect on the CNS system. And like, again, at the toxicology, I actually worked on like cannabinoid and then understand the mechanism. And I do understand, I do know the reason people use that medical marijuana because molecularly it interacts with CB1 receptor, what we call the cannabinoid receptor 1 and 2. So, the good effect, which is a pain relief and the immune system, is delivered by CB2. It's a CB2 receptor agonist. But unfortunately, marijuana is not specific. It also act on CB1 receptor, which expressed in multiple organs, CNS, skeleton muscle, pancreas, liver, you name the field. And a lot of side effect is mediated by CB1 receptor. In fact, I know quite a few pharmaceutical company trying to harness the good side of marijuana by developing specific CB2 receptor agonist to relieve pain, to treat immune system disease. But unfortunately, so far, hasn't been succeed. It's very hard to generate very specific CB2 agonist. And in fact, this is actually my own research I've done with the compounds that have supposed to be very potent CB2 agonist but has some side, have less selectivity to CB1. When you treat with mice, with rat, in a few weeks, you will see the liver turn to a foil grass, like very fatty liver. So, that's just one thing in addition to the CNS effect. And I have a paper from toxicology also study the chronic effect of this. I just read it. It's associated with psychiatric, respiratory, cardiovascular, and bone effect. It also has oncogenic, teratogenic, and mutagenic effects depending on the dose and duration. So, I just want the board to understand it is a drug. It is bad. And please opt-out. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I live in Georgetown subdivision Vernon Hills. I've been here about five years. I moved five years ago from Buffalo Grove to Vernon Hills, highly because the really good school district, the family-friendly, safe neighborhood. I have two kids. One of my sons, my older son, spoke here earlier. He is a Stevenson High School junior. And at home, he talked me a lot about what his peers does at school and vaping and all that kind of thing. So, imagine those are even legalized. And if we have shops around school here, how easy it is for them to access marijuana. And for them, the perception is this is very less risky thing. And if my peers can do it, I can do it. It's all that peer pressure, pressure and the influence from kids. They know this is not good thing, but they're kids, being kids. They are just curious. They want to try out new things. They don't know what the damage will do to their brain. So, as a mother, and also, I saw the slides out earlier that the get higher in the hills, that Vernon Hills cannabis exit Route 60, it just made me shivering. So, the future of our Vernon Hills is in your hands, our dear elected official, our respected trustee members. Please say opt-out.
Dear Vernon Hills Village Trustees, thank you for your patience to give us the time to listen to our voice. So, I'm Liang Mei Feng. I'm living Sugar Creek subdivision Vernon Hills. So, actually, thank you for giving me very limited opportunity to do the public speaking. You know, it is not my good act. But for my kids, for my family, I'm willing to stand out. I'm willing to spend three hours to listen to all the facts, all the numbers, all the data, all the pro and the cons. Thank you. So, I just want to say as a mom, you know, I have two kids. The older one is 12 years old, boy. The second one is 10 years old, girl. So, I looked at their eyes and I said, "Mom, these days, what you are doing?" I said, "I'm busy working for, fighting for the opt-out." So, what's that for? So, I said, "I just look at them eyes. I just don't want to regret." Few years later, when they go to the Stevenson High, or when? Oh, they said, "My son is accidentally, is curiosity triggers him to take marijuana." So, I don't want my 10 years daughter, several years later, she is a victim who is taking marijuana. That is all I'm here for. So, please, thank you for listening to my voice. You know, this is all I'm here about. I have a very busy life. My job is kind of, my work is actually working the Baxter. Their mission statement is a safe and assisting life. So, that is the same here, you know, for our village. You know, we have a vision, how this village supposed to go. It's a healthy, positive, family-oriented community or it's just go other side, like revenue, tax benefit, all of the profit, you know, from the kind of best thing we already know. So, this is, we have to have a stand. Thank you so much to support that. The other thing I want to say is, you know, we already have a lot of, currently, our world is very confusing. You know, we have a lot of issue US is facing, you know. So, I don't want to add one more thing like this to our very busy life, very confusing life, you know. So, please help us to draw the borderline, you know. Mundaline is in our neighborhood. They already choose to opt-in, but we need to have our base here, you know. Let us to give kids a very safe life in Vernon Hills. And we will even to impact to Buffalo Grove and Lincolnshire. So, this is all I want to say. Thank you so much. Please support opt-out.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jianhua Peng. I have lived in Vernon Hills for almost three years. Originally, I came from Canada. The reason for me to move to Illinois Vernon Hills is marijuana is legal in Canada. So, to my surprise, here we have the same issues. So, our current governor, J.B. Priestker, who advocated that legalizing marijuana will help with tax revenue, has either done it with a corruption mindset or has logical defects and ignorance based on the cost behind the scene. Here, I just want to list some facts after J.B. promoting legalized marijuana. Illinois population shortage hits all time. Illinois income tax, property tax still raised after state level marijuana legalization. Property value drops while real estate value across our metropolitan area in United States are booming. So, on top of all these mess caused by promoting recreational marijuana, a recent study conducted by the Continental Institute looked at Colorado's legalization regime and found that for every $10 of tax revenue generated by marijuana taxes, Floridians paid $4.50 to mitigate marijuana-related social costs stemming from the healthcare and education system, accidental poisoning, impaired driving, and increased car costs. So, along similar lines, a study looking at the projected cost of legalization in Rhode Island found that even by conservative estimates, legalization would incur costs that are at least 25% greater than expected revenue. If making money is the goal, then legalization is self-defeating because it will cost more tax dollars than it generates. So, if you consider yourself to be a fiscal conservative, then perhaps you should actually be against legalization. Therefore, I would ask the trustees not to blind to these facts, fix, and studies that legalizing recreational marijuana is actually putting our taxpayers under more financial burdens. Therefore, opt-out to legalizing recreational marijuana in Village of Vernon Hills.
Hi, good evening. The Village Committee. This is Zhao Yan and I live in the DOPS subdivision in Vernon Hills. I just heard like some lady said that most people here, you know, speak out, was not from the Vernon Hills. But fortunately, we do have the paper, you know, from that lady that record everybody and whoever speak here tonight is from well. So, I believe the majority is from the Vernon Hills itself. So, please check that. And regarding the lady also mentioned like the law, the whatever the fact from other people, even not from the same like town, like Vernon Hills. So, I also want to say this too because I believe the knowledge has no border, right? Like, if Doctor Warner and Doctor Nina and also Doctor Hong Chen told us the fact how bad the recreational marijuana is very bad for our community and for our children, that is truth. Just same how I trust on your, this, you know, Village Committee will make the right decision. I trust on the professional, whatever the facts. Same thing, the police, you know, chief also said that the regulation, they have no control. They can only try their best. As a police chief, they can only say this way. So, that means our regulation is really not complete and it's really not clear itself. And one more thing I also want to mention, it's very sad to see the Mundaline, you know, choose to opt-in. Yesterday, they are right. We have a lot of people go to support this neighborhood. Why? Because Vernon Hills is really a very reputed city in the northwest suburb of Chicago, right? So, we want to take the leadership, really influence, you know, the neighborhood and build the whole bigger community of good thing, not the bad stuff, right? So, I told, you know, the Mundaline committee in yesterday meeting, don't become the only one that choose opt-in the whole northwest suburb. Why? Libby will already opt-out, right? Grace Lake already, you know, opt-out. And same thing, Lake Forest. I believe tonight, Vernon Hills committee I believe tonight Vernon Hills committee will also make the right decision to really make the opt out. So, Mandeline is the only one choose, you know, very kind of bad, made a very bad choice, that we, they will regret, you know, in the future, I can see that. So, anyway, today, I stand in this really blue ribbon, you know, reputed school, I really want to say, think about the fact, all the professional already told you very clearly, and we stand here, this reputed, so, opt out, that's it, very straightforward, just opt out.
I'm Tiffany Wong, resident in the Buffalo Grove. The reason I come here, because I help friends manage their property here. And we listen so much about how this marijuana evil kill the people and hurt kids' rent, and also affect the community traffic, and make a lot of troubles from Colorado, we already see. And what I want to tell things from real estate perspective view, there's a case happened, and there's a lady living in the one, two-bedroom house, and they happen cannot do the rent, and the reason is, there's a smelling of stinking things. So, they may need it, they don't go to doctors, and they go to illegal way to consume them, and the lady, and end up, the house have to no revenue, and owner have to consider sell it at the lower value, value. So, for this, we found out, the people who consume this without doctors prescribe, and they may overdose it, and end up with, they couldn't afford a house, they may end up future, a lot of house, and before foreclosure or short sale. So, one respected trustees, I can see beautiful city, is under your management, on how to build a beautiful, happy family environment here, and when we make decision, try to get 3% more of the revenue, we also want to make decision for future, next, next generation of the smart kids, and longer time, fully satisfied, happy family, and the most value of their houses. So, I highly suggest all the trustees, think of not just some people die for the illegal thing, and let them go to the right way to consume the marijuana, let our city be happy, be safe, let's vote out out.
Yeah, my name is Fang Zhuang, I've been living here for 20 years, I live in the Millfield, Vernon Hills, and I didn't prepare any facts before coming here, but after attending this meeting, listening to so many presentations, I'm so proud of this town, and I'm so proud of the great leaders as you guys, you guys are really doing a great, great job in the past 20 years, I've seen the big growth in Vernon Hills. And we have the, one of the best schools in Illinois, and I believe we are different from the rest of the towns who vote for the opt in, and we are different, we are even many other towns have voted, speak differently, even Illinois is legalized marijuana, but we are different. I believe we can attract more people to Vernon Hills if we opt out, and I really appreciate what you have done for our town, thank you so much.
Good evening, thank you, my name is Hai Tao Yao, I live in Vernon Hills about 16 years, my wife Lisa, who just speak here, and basically, tonight, I'm here to support my wife, as well as to support all the people for Up Out Marijuana. Thank you. Actually, last night, I was also supporting my wife in go to Mandeline, and so I feel tonight, because I just watching, I just participate, see how the environment go, and how people's opinion, because I did not really do a lot of research, but my wife and all the people, all the doctor, they did a lot of research, and I believe them. And so, tonight, I'm here, I feel I'm so proud of this crowd, and also so proud of Vernon Hills, because, and also so proud of our leadership. This is, you spend very, very patient, spend very late to listen our opinion. So, I just want to say, thank you so much for listen to us, and from the resident of Vernon Hills, and also, we have collected about 328 families of Vernon Hills residents, they choose for Up Out for this action. So, I'm so proud of you, and so I'm so honored to present this to the board, hope our board will make right decision to protect and to make our Vernon Hills great, great again. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening, the board, and I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion with you on this very important topic. We will be taking tonight's presentation discussions under advisement, and we'll be taking formal action on the decision to allow or prohibit recreational cannabis sales in the Village of Vernon Hills at a future board meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask any board members if they want to make any kind of a statement regarding what transpired tonight. Doctor, Justy Appenheimer?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, especially our invited speakers, the attorney, the police chief, and Dr. Weiner. And I thank everyone who spoke on both sides, it's very helpful for us to hear people who have differing opinions. I'm not going to speak as a pediatrician, although I concur with my partner Dr. Sirota's words, but I'm just going to mention an anecdotal episode that, from my experience, and how it informs me. I went to college in the late 80s in Indiana, and I was in a fraternity house, and I never smoked marijuana, and to this day, I still haven't, so if that lets you believe. But I became very familiar with it, we'll say, living in a fraternity house, who was always available to me, a good percentage of the fraternity house members did smoke, and oftentimes would suggest that I would, and honestly, I was a little nervous that I would like it too much, and I would become addicted, and not be able to attain my goals. But the reason I'm speaking about this is I want to mention one fraternity brother, his name was Doug, who was a couple of years younger than I am, Doug did smoke marijuana pretty frequently, and he was a very smart young man, smarter than I, I would imagine, at least based on SAT scores and other things. He was not a science major, he was a business major, as I recall. But Doug, one day, decided to go out of town to a concert, you can guess which concert this was, but he went to a concert, and apparently did some acid, LSD, I believe. And I really believe that it was his introduction to, and his experience with other drugs, that led him to try this. Now, once again, this is anecdotal, and I can't prove it, but I believe that it was the gateway for him. So, he did this, and he came back a changed person, we can actually, we could tell in that short period of time, that he was different, just in the way that he spoke to us. And it came to pass that he started not only smoking in his room, but he actually was caught a few times leaving marijuana in our main public space of the fraternity house, and it came to a vote that we had to kick him out, because we couldn't, we couldn't risk the fraternity house, that we would all be kicked out because of his actions. So, he, it was maybe not a three-hour meeting as this was, but it was a long fraternity meeting that we actually had to vote on to kick this young gentleman out, and it was decided that we would kick him out, but somehow get help for him. So, he was living back in a dorm, and one day, I was in our mailroom, and I happened upon, I was just looking at the mail that just came in, I happened upon a magazine called Science Magazine, and I started thumbing through it, and I saw on the cover that it was addressed to Doug, who was not a science major, and I was thinking how sad it was that he probably understood this material, and I didn't, looking through some of these articles, it was very complicated information, but I really believe that he did at one point, but probably didn't anymore. Later that day, we got word that he hanged himself, and I went down and grabbed that magazine to always remember the impact some of these choices have. And once again, it is anecdotal, and I don't know if it's just because of the marijuana that led him to the LSD, but he followed that path, and I just want to remember Doug.
Well, we all know this is a, look, this is a very emotional issue, there's no doubt about it. It is legal, there is no way around that, absolutely, and, you know, whether you support legalization or not, that, you know, it doesn't matter, because it is legal, and, you know, I don't think any different for someone who's fine with legalization, I'm fine with that, or someone who even wants to open a business, I get it. But you know what, here's the reality, you know what the real issue is, and it's all coming to fruition, it's the vaping, it's these cigarettes, and it's not helping the THC cost, because they're linking these vaping illnesses to, you know, the THC, because now THC is in an oil form. I mean, see, so to me, you know, look, I went to Indiana as well, I was in a fraternity, yes, I saw it, the weed was smoked, it certainly wasn't eaten, well, I guess it was eaten in brownies and cookies, I mean, that hasn't changed, but the way it's made now is, you know, made it to look like candy, the oil form, that's really scary. You know, I read something from the US Surgeon General, and this sums up, you know, pretty much my perspective, recent increases in access to marijuana in its potency, along with misrepresentations of safety of marijuana endanger our most precious resource, our nation's youth. That's the US, you know, Surgeon General. So, you know, as that one slide, yes, the slides are going to be biased towards one way or the other, and I, you could get the argument on the other side as well, that it's not nearly as bad as what some people would make it out to be, but at the end of the day, the potency of this product is really dangerous. Europe considers 16% THC level as a hard drug. I actually had a conversation with someone, you know, who is in Springfield, and he, there is a committee in Illinois looking and evaluating potency, and that may be under, you know, with the trailer amendment that's coming out, looking at maybe, you know, as far as it is legal, but maybe potency exceeding, you know, 15% or 20% is as far as it'll go in Illinois. But, you know, it is what it is, like I said, and, you know, there's no way around it, but this town's about kids, there's no question about it, I've been here 21 years, I have four children, still have children in the school systems, people I engage with all have children, and, you know, everyone here who came up here, who were, you know, you know, supporting not having a, you know, a dispensary or retail establishment here, they all have one thing in common, they have kids. And yes, it is legal in Mandeline, you know, they already had a medicinal dispensary. So, again, like, you know, like Mike said, if someone, if you really, he drives 15 miles to get pizza, I'll go to Morton Grove to get pizza, I go to Pequod's, because that's the best deep dish pizza on the planet. So, you know, at the end of the day, if it's, do we, do a lot of people want it here? No, they don't necessarily want a store here, and yes, you can drive a mile and a half down to Butterfield and get it. I know that doesn't necessarily support your initiative as a business owner, but, you know, you can't rule out, you know, other communities that, you know, are opting in. So, that's just my perspective on that. And everybody, thank you for coming out, because this is what, you know, you can actually, you know, being a trustee, I've realized, you really can make a difference on a village level, you really can, and, you know, federal, and on a state level, not so much, but on a village level, you absolutely can, and, you know, that's what's great, when the community comes out, then, you know, we're all advocates of you, and, you know, you know, at least the people that come out. I tell people to come out, send emails, because, you know what, don't complain to me if you're not really going to, you know, take the initiative to show up. So, thank you, have a good night.
Any other trustees want to comment on this?
I'm just gonna make a quick word, thank you for everybody coming out. I've lived in this village for 40 years. And I've raised my family, my wife, my two kids, and I appreciate people coming out that have never really spoken, to come up and speak their mind, you're speaking from the heart, and this individual does listen. So, thank you very much, I'm not going to keep talking, because we've been here for quite a bit of time, so thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something, Mike's been here for how many years?
Forty years.
Yeah, I've been here 42. And I've been married 45, 45 years, but with that said, yeah, this is a great town, it's a town that, you know, I think myself and the board members truly love, my kids went through the system, my kids didn't, this high school wasn't open yet, but, so they didn't go here, but that was something that I, myself, and somebody, other sitting trustees here, we worked tirelessly on to get this high school in this town, okay? Just from a historical standpoint, you know, this is a problem that was thrust upon us by Governor Pritzker and the state legislature. So, you know, what we decide to do is, I think, we'll try to do the right thing, and the bottom line is, is that, you know, the state, you know, I don't know how they, you know, actually studied this, and what they reviewed, but I mean, I can say something that I know, an article I read, and about Portland, Oregon, there's so much marijuana there now, it's six, the supply is six times more than the demand, you know, and so, I don't know where it's, you know, it's all going, but the fact that a matter is, this is starting here, but I could tell you, these dispensaries, retail dispensaries, they're going to multiply, I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be hundreds of them around the state, and, you know, God bless you for, you know, opting out, but, you know, it's, the state has created, you know, a problem we have to handle now. And do we stop all, you know, I guess, people buying marijuana? I don't think so, you know, people are still going to get it if they want it. Personally, you know, the thing that troubles me the most is the incidents that have happened in town, that were actually suicides, and suicides from heroin, and, you know, my God, heroin, you know, they snort it, you know, and it's, you know, I'm sure all the folks sitting here can tell stories on that too, you know, and other potential drugs, but that is just really troubling, and of course, you know, I knew a couple of families personally, and it's, you know, they're gone, so, in any event, I think the board will do the right thing, usually know what to do, so, that's all I got, folks.
Before you ask for a motion to adjourn, I just have one thing that I wanted to note for the record, Trustee Brown obviously is not here tonight, she is in Puerto Rico, and if you follow the news, they've had several earthquakes there, and another tropical storm turning into a hurricane coming across, she's trapped. So, she could not be here tonight, not because she didn't want to, but she just couldn't get here.
Yeah, it's, boy, it's- Yeah, that's, that's, boy, that's tough news for all those folks. Okay, with that said, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Motion is second. Roll, let's have a roll call on this.
Trustee Ty Oka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Suck?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Markford?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.